I'd like to call this meeting to attention, please. Welcome to a full house. We're glad to have you here and participate in local governance and glad to see you here doing your civic duty. Looking forward to hearing from you tonight. Before we get started, we will have a roll call and then we'll move on to our Pledge of Allegiance.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Here.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Here.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Stein?
Here.
Councilmember Tracy?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here. Let's all rise, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yahoo!
Are there any council member announcements for tonight?
The just, we do have a general government meeting, I believe Wednesday, and in addition, Wednesday's also Carolyn.
We do, and I believe you are heading that up, but we need one more council member to participate on Carolyn if you're available at 8:30 in the morning. That'd be fabulous.
And one more thing, just on that general government meeting, this week it will be Zach Holder from the Division of Wildlife coming in and talk to us and even to talk about our deer problem in town, and then they're going to be talking about some fence requirements.
Just to let you know, I think we're going to have Bob Carocci instead of Zach Holder, maybe both of them, but for sure Bob.
Good to know. I think a lot of people in this audience might be as interested to know about the rampant deer population as well and ways that we are working towards better managing that population. I'd also like to let everyone know that Fox 21 is in Canyon City this entire week. They're featuring Canyon City this, every single day on their news because it's Blossom Week, and it's an exciting week and really want to offer gratitude to all who are involved in the Blossom Committee for making it the, one of the busiest and best events of the entire year of Canyon City possible here for our blossom festivities and are certainly grateful to them. We're going to move on now to some recognitions and proclamations. Our first one will be a recognition for the National Historic Preservation Month. Lisa is our museum director. Would you like to address council about the National Historic Preservation Month?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and City Council. Both the museum and the Historic Preservation Commission, the city's Historic Preservation Commission would greatly appreciate the city's council, city council's recognition of National Historic Preservation Month and helping promote the importance of historical structural resources that still exist within Canyon City. This month, the Royal Gorge Regional Museum is planning on doing a social media campaign to encourage historic preservation within our community by spotlighting a few of our historic structures that we have lost to time and a few of the buildings that we were able to save. We are also in correlation with National Historic Preservation Month and May's sesquicentennial celebration theme. I cordially like to invite local residents to share their stories and memories of picking and growing fruits and vegetables within the area as part of our Community Coffee and Conversation Club that we are doing on Thursday, this Thursday, May 5th at 9:00 a.m., and there will be free donuts and coffee and hopefully some really good stories in helping to promote and preserve our history and heritage. And again, thank you so much for taking the opportunity and proclaiming this National Historic Preservation Month.
Thank you, Lisa. We sure appreciate all that. Excuse me, the UWA and your, you and all those in your stewardship are doing for National Historic Preservation and for Canyon City Historic Preservation, for sure. It's been amazing and exciting to see the buildings that are taking advantage of the opportunity for these tax credits and to renew some of these buildings that have been old and dilapidated and now they're coming back to life again. So you're a big part of that. Thank you. For reading the proclamation, I would like to invite the city council to join together in doing that. Councilmember Tracy, if you wouldn't mind leading us and we'll just work our way down.
Sure, thanks. From the Office of the Mayor, proclamation, National Historic Preservation Month, May 2022, whereas local historic preservation is an effective tool for revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability and?
Whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds and?
Whereas Canyon City has a very distinct and unequaled historic district and various historic landmarks and?
Whereas Canyon City has a vast network of dedicated residence groups and other organizations that pride themselves on the hard work and determination put forth in order to preserve our unique past for future generations and?
Whereas Canyon, it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contribution made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has helped shape us as a community.
Now, therefore, I, Ashley Smith, Mayor of Canyon City, Colorado, have the distinct honor of proclaiming May 2022 as National Historic Preservation Month and call upon the people of Canyon City to join their fellow citizens across Colorado and the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance dated this 2nd of May 2022.
Thank you, and congratulations again. I now like to invite Travis Payne, our Water Superintendent, to come and address city council.
Hello. I just wanted to remind everybody that this is National Drinking Water Week, and in honor of that, we're doing tours this Friday from 9:00 to 2:00 o'clock at the top of every hour. The address of 103 Tunnel Drive. So if you guys want to come up and grab a tour, you can see how your water gets cleaned and see what the process is.
Thank you. We appreciate that. It's a fascinating process.
Yeah, I'd like to think so, so.
Absolutely.
Show people what it's all about, so.
There's a lot, there's a lot of science that goes into.
Yeah, and if that doesn't work for you, we're always willing to give tours whenever people want them, so you can always call 719-269-9019 and ask for me, Travis Payne, and we'll set you something up.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Travis. We appreciate you being here tonight.
Yep.
I'm now going to turn some time over to our Finance Director who is representing or taking the place of our Administrator Ryan Stevens, while he's out of town. Tammy, would you be willing to please go over our consent agenda?
Yes. On our consent agenda tonight, we have item 6A, approving the minutes for the regular city council meeting, April 18th, 2022. The special meeting between city, city, county, April 11th, 2022, and Vision Committee, April 20th, 2022. 6B is to award S02022 to the Aisha GPS soft, survey software and hardware upgrade in an amount not to exceed $38,006. Item 6C is to authorize the city administrator to sign a sewer, a sanitary sewer ISMA agreement at 304 South First Street with Fremont Sanitation. 6D, authorize the city administrator's signature on a mental health co-responder grant contract. Item 6E, ratify the mayor's signature on a letter of support for Star Point. Item 6F, to ratify the mayor's signature on the Zia Rides Bike Race Event Agreement. Item 6G is the cash disbursements from April 19th through May 2nd, 2022. And then we have an addition of item 6H to authorize the mayor's signature on a letter of support for Gold Belt Tour Scenic and Historic Byway. Do you have questions on any of the items?
I would like to give an opportunity for Chief Schick and our corresponders to address the mental health co-responder grant contract if you, if you may.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Just a short, well, we've, it's been a year now. We are still working diligently to get our staffing levels where they need to be to outfit that second co-responder that's provided for in this grant. We're really looking forward to that opportunity. That will allow us to have the services that most, most of our front, front side shifts are experiencing with Corporal Snyder and Marcy currently. So we will be able to put a co-responder law enforcement entity on the back end of the week's schedule, and our intent is for now, we'll have to split Marcy's services and service, some of it on the front side, some of it on the back side, until hopefully next year, we can convince those granting authorities to provide us for a second clinician. They're, they, they, they saved the city a considerable amount of money. They help steer mental health away from incarceration, and they genuinely reduce the, the climate and the incidence of use of force when they're present. So we're looking forward to that.
Marcy and Officer Snyder, do you have something you'd like to add?
There we go. I do want to let you know that we've had some amazing opportunities come to us that are allowing us to grow our, our knowledge of what co-response is capable of. We were recently chosen as one of 24 communities nationwide to take part in a co-response grant where we get to meet with the experts across the nation who have already put these programs into place and had thriving success. So we'll get the opportunity to meet with a co-response team out of Nebraska and see how they're trying to move towards a block scheduling where, I mean, it's not based on demand as much as having availability 24 hours a day. We are also talking with Houston on what they are doing with homeless outreach, with their specialized co-response homeless team. We are also going to have opportunities to meet with other agencies that have built their programs directly through the police department as well as with community colleges set, or universities like we've seen with University Health in Fort Collins. We've also had the opportunity to do a lot of research with our homeless outreach on how other communities in Colorado like Durango and Bell have handled their situations, which led us to Las Cruces, New Mexico, where they started as a six-month program, much like we're doing, and realized that the need was much more necessary, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. So they were able to come up with a plan to do temporary shelter in place with three-sided, like we had discussed before. And that still seems to be the most valuable model we've seen on that side of the co-response with the homeless outreach that we do. But I just see a continued growth. We have a learning collaborative next week in Chicago with Built for Zero, where we'll get to learn more about how they are handling the situations in other areas. And then we have the National Co-Response Conference coming in June in North Carolina. So we're constantly working to expand our knowledge of what's available out there, how to write these grants, how to get the things we need so that we can build the program that the city deserves.
Thank you for that. And for the benefit of the public, and we have some new council members as well, can you kind of give us an overview of what maybe a typical week might look for you as corresponders?
Well, as far as typical, I don't think those actually exist. So, but then the expectations going into any week is that we'll likely deal with three to four mental health calls usually throughout the week where it's someone who is out in public and is either drawing concerns for their safety or for the safety of others. And we go and we assess the situation and determine if these individuals need further treatment through hospitalization possibly, or if they need to go to Solvista directly for the mental health crisis evaluation. Since we do have 24-hour, seven-day-a-week mobile crisis response clinicians, then our days are usually filled with meetings with different organizations throughout the community so that we can stay in, in tune with the needs. If we find out that there's someone who is, found themselves in a recent crisis situation where, you know, they've lost their home and they need a place to go, then we can arrange for them to have an assessment for respite care, if that's the level of care needed, just to help them stabilize from the crisis. We've also been able to put people up in a hotel for a few nights in order to avoid medical situations or the cold weather. So essentially, our job is, we joke that we are the, the problem solvers for the unsolvable problems. And it's, let's figure this out. And we've done that through connections, not only in our own community, but with organizations in Colorado Springs and Pueblo. We've taken people to rehab for detox on occasions. We've driven people to the bus station and helped them get back to homes in Texas with family. So it's just basically if, if someone needs a phone in order to be able to reach their mental health therapy sessions, then we'll get that phone so that they can access those services. So.
Can you please offer an enlightenment of how, since we've had the co-responder program, how that's impacted the services of the CP, CCPD, our police officers, and them being able to take care of their normal, everyday business versus having to go to emergency 911, mental health crisis calls?
Yeah. I'm Corporal Snyder. I'm the course, the law enforcement correspondent. Really, obviously, our goals are to help respond to mental health calls, but we also want to make sure that we're providing a positive impact for the officers at the police department through helping those officers be better trained and better prepared to deal with mental health calls themselves. So two of the major methods that law enforcement use to handle mental health holds is, there's two of them. There's one called M1 and an M.5. And a year ago, if we rewind, most of the officers kind of knew how to use both of those well. They could kind of get by with the bare minimum. Since we've been involved, those, those two different forms that we use, when they're completed, they look very well, they're completed very well. All the information that's needed is there for the hospital and the doctors to use. The officers are writing better reports and documenting mental health issues better. They're doing a better job at forwarding that information to us for follow-up. In addition to saving the officer time, we're also really focused on trying to save not just the money, but money to the citizens as well. So far in the first quarter of 2022, I think we were just under, was it $17,000 in savings to citizens? And I can give you an example of where we save time and money for officers and citizens. So a call we dealt with last week was a suicidal juvenile, and I'll leave all the details out, but this is a call that, had we not been available and involved with, it probably would have led to a use of force situation. Because we were involved, we were able to de-escalate that person, and instead of having them transported by AMR, which saves around $800, and we didn't have to have them transported to the hospital, which saves about $2,040, I think, we were able to get them transported in our co-responder vehicle to Solvista directly for that assessment process. So we're saving probably at least 90 minutes, maybe two hours worth of time of officers' time on the road, and we're saving that family financial troubles from having to deal with that. So that's a kind of a rounded, perfect example of really what we're trying to get involved with.
And then in turn, that person was able to be stabilized in their community, set up with resources for the next day for intake, was able to de-escalate with a peer, and they came up with a safety plan, and were able to release the person back to their family. And that's our ultimate goal, is to treat these people where they are and not have to hospitalized. That's last resort because it can be more traumatizing to be hospitalized than actually have the crisis that led to it. So we want it to be last ditch effort to go to the hospital. We want you to be able to face this here with all the supports that we can offer 24 hours a day, seven days a week through the other programs through Solvista.
Thank you. We have a question from Councilmember Tracy.
Thanks. I, I had the opportunity to spend a few hours with the co-responder team back in February, I think it was, and was, my longest career was in human services, child protection related, and I was really, really impressed with the work that's being done. So just want to thank the whole department and specifically the, the co-responder team for that work. I, I did have a specific question about the grant application with the Department of Human Services. I, I just wasn't clear if, what the reason was that we couldn't apply for funds for a second mental health responder as part of a second team, or I'm not sure who can answer that.
Yeah. Essentially, it just comes down to the funds that are granted to us. We just don't have enough money in there to have that second clinician as well. I was, so the, it runs on the state fiscal year, which starts July 1st. So from our grant last year, I was able to increase the available funding by $10,000. And every year, the, the state is making investments into these types of programs and trying to, you know, assist communities with, with these problems and stuff. So I anticipate that the funding will become larger every year. Our goal is that we would be able to add that second person, that second clinician, and we could have two full teams. It's just a process that we just got to keep, keep trying.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure we're watching it, whatever's available out there to fund this because?
Yep.
It's important work for the community. Thanks.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And so before the co-responder program, essentially, we had a police force that had, I would say that was, you know, my observation was minimal training in mental health issues, and that the tool belt that the police officers had in, in dealing with some of these crisis situations were all law enforcement tools. And a lot of times, when you're dealing with a person in crisis, those are not necessarily the tools that are appropriate to deal with, with the issue at hand. And so, you know, it's been several years since we implemented the, the co-responder program, and, and I, based on the reports that I have heard, am quite pleased with how it is going and how we are helping people that are in crisis. But, but something else has changed since our program has started, which in my view is kind of taken away one of the tools of law enforcement, which is the no cash bail movement. And isn't it true that, that one of the tools that police were able to use, or law enforcement were able to use, is if there was a, a person perhaps that might be in danger to himself or to the community experiencing some type of crisis, that the, that person could be arrested, but that is no longer the case, I believe. I mean, it can be arrested, but essentially with no cash bail, they're essentially right back out on the street. Do I understand that correctly?
Mayor Pro Tim, that's, that's an interesting question that you ask, and the no cash bail legislative efforts, I don't think significantly impact our mental health response. I know our coresponders, they share this information with the troops at the line level that respond to these calls. We have expanded our CIT-trained police officers. That's a specific training or operational platform, crisis intervention training, that helps them to de-escalate situations, identify certain mental health conditions, and, and steer them away from the criminal justice system and into the mental health community where ultimately they need. Anytime we introduce mental health individuals into the criminal justice system, I think we're, we're compounding their issues because they're not going to get the care that they, they deserve. They're not going to get the care that they need. And undiagnosed and untreated, those, those problems just fester. So we try, correct me if I'm wrong, Phil, we, we work diligently at steering those folks away from the criminal justice community. So how much impact the bail legislation would have on our efforts in that capacity, I, I think is minimal.
Our goal is to avoid the jail as well, and that's part of the co-response model, is to not use jails or, or emergency rooms for placement whenever that's not the appropriate place to go. So what we are also working towards is training our officers how to better handle those situations each year. And for instance, 40 of our officers in the next five weeks will receive eight hours of mental health first aid training. So this is something we're also working with them directly at increasing their knowledge.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from council about this or anything else on the consent agenda? If not, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda and agenda. Councilmember Smith?
Apologies.
Sorry. Your hand is raised, Councilmember Schmisher, please.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. I have a question, not on this, but on a separate agenda item. On 7G, I was wondering if Finance Director Nordike could refresh us or remind us about the process that we went through in order to approve the purchase of the new method laundry parking lot. Thank you.
Could you hear that, Tammy?
So before we purchased the new method parking lot, this has been going on for, I would say, at least a year. We did receive the letter from Colorado Department of Public Health to state that we would not be liable for any, any contamination, and they knew it didn't come from the parking lot. So we did, we did have all of those protections in place before we purchased this, this parking lot.
Sorry, to, to refine my question just a bit. I mean, what process did we go through for council to approve the purchase of the parking lot? If you could just refresh us on that. Thank you.
That would have been back in 2020 when it was initially presented to council. We did do an escrow deposit, I want to say it was February of 2021. So it has been, it has been ongoing.
Thank you so much.
And for the benefit of the public, the new method laundry on Main Street, it's a very dilapidated building. Nobody is ever going to buy this building. It is so bad. And what we have found is also considerable contamination from dry cleaning chemicals. The city is in process of addressing one of downtown's number one requests, and that's for more public parking. Part of that process is now to buy the parking lot behind new method laundry. That's the same owner. And then hopefully at some point, when we can work something out with the EPA, to. And then hopefully at some point, when we can work something out with the EPA, to also purchase New Method Laundry and tear that building down before it kills somebody or takes another building down with it. It's, it's a quite a blight and a nuisance. And then be able to turn it into a parking lot to address the needs of our public. And so this is just one step closer to achieving that ultimate goal. And with that, we'll go back to you, Councilmember Smith, for a motion.
Madam Mayor and council, I move to approve the consent agenda as written.
My second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call vote.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Stein.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracy.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Aye.
Thank you, council. Thank you, staff. Tammy, would you like to offer an administrator's report, please?
Yes. You did receive the administrator's report. I will not go over everything in detail. One thing that we do need to discuss tonight is that since the administrator's report was published, we now, we have an additional item. At the last council meeting, it was discussed that we needed dates for the interviews for the District Two seat and the Trails Committee. We did have six people who responded with dates, and the three dates that had the most votes were Thursday, May 26th, Thursday, June 9th, or Monday, June 13th. So we do need to pick one of those dates to set the interviews for both of the candidates for District Two and for the two candidates that we have for the Trails Committee. They do have until Friday still to submit letters of interest.
Okay. Councilmember Tracy.
It is a struggle to find a date, and I was afraid that even after doing the doodle poll, that things might change in my schedule, and they have. So of those three dates that you named, the first one works best for me. The others, I, at best, would have to do remotely, but just leave it at that.
May 26th.
Yeah. Are there any other of these days that would not work for council? Seeing none, then it looks like May 26th would be the ideal date.
Great, thank you.
Cindy, have we had very many letters of interest for the Trails and for District Two?
Currently, I have two candidates for District Two, and I just reached a third, so I have three candidates for the Trails Committee.
Perfect.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions for Tammy? And we'll move on to item 8A. This is a second reading and adoption by title only of Ordinance 8, Series of 2022. This is concerning a master lease agreement with US Bancorp Government leasing and financing for police vehicles. Back to you again, Tammy.
Before you tonight is the second reading for Ordinance 8, Series 2022. The addendum to the master lease agreement with US Bancorp Government leasing and financing for the police vehicles. After the first reading, I did verify that the calculation for the interest was correct. There was questions on that, so I did double-check that. There have been no changes to the ordinance since the first reading on April 18th, and there has, has not been any public comment or input on it that we've received.
Thank you. Chief, would you like to add anything?
We appreciate council support. Our fleet is aging, but the influx of new police Tahos has been a breath of fresh air for folks, literally and otherwise. So we are still waiting on, I believe, five of those Tahos. And that's certainly going to strengthen the patrol capacity of our march units. Next year, we're going to have to focus on unmarks. The detectives' vehicles particularly are aging out, to say the least. So, but thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any additional questions, comments? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion. Councilmember Tracy.
I move for approval of Ordinance 8, Series of 2022, on second reading.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call vote.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Stein.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracy.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Aye.
And can I ask everybody to speak up a little bit? We obviously have a large crowd today, and it's very hard for, and Councilmember Schmisher, we're having a really hard time hearing you. So if everybody could speak up a little bit, we'd appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks for the reminder. We are moving on to item 8B. This is second reading and adoption by title only of Ordinance 9, Series of 2022. This is an ordinance amending Title 17 of the Canyon City Municipal Code by the addition thereto of new subsections INJ of Section 17.05.151, concerning temporary shelters. As a background, I would like to offer, for the benefit of the public, that Canyon Cities have, has been having to find a number of tools and resources to tackle the problem of homelessness in Canyon City and Fremont County. And it is, as you've already heard today, the co-responder program is one of those tools that we have been using to help solve the problem of homelessness in Canyon City. And that's just one of them. It's such a complicated issue. There's no one solution. We're finding it's a multiplicity of solutions and, and things to try. There is definitely an issue with the number of homelessness and with remodeling at the emergency shelter, that there was a need to try, as an experiment, a temporary outdoor, safe outdoor space for homelessness. We had tried it during the winter months with the intention of lessons learned. And throughout that time, we sat multiple times with a number of stakeholders involved to find out what was working, what's not working, what can we do better. This is not a place, and it was not a place, where anybody could go at any time. It was not a free-for-all, it was not a tent city. It was a place that you had to apply to go, have an agreement that you would follow designated rules. And one of those, many rules, a lot of them doing with safety and respect, but also a commitment to being on a progression plan, a plan towards bettering your life to a point to where you could enter back into society and into housing and into employment. Part of that was also having a commitment from our police officers, Solvista Health, Rocky Mountain Behavioral Health, and other organizations to visit that location every single day and spend time with them and have their meetings with them and their appointments for, for them to be able to go onto that path. There were a lot of lessons that we did learn and things that we needed to know that needed to be done better, if this were to be a successful venture, to be one of those tools that we needed to solve homelessness in Canyon City. But we found that in order to be able to have some of those things, like fencing and other rules and such forth, that we actually needed to make this a legal venture in Canyon City. Those efficiencies themselves is not sufficient enough to take care of our numbers of homelessness. However, I will and do want to give a shout-out to the Built for Zero team. They have started back in 2019, really finding new methodologies that are proven by science and by other communities throughout the United States with grant money. Actually, it was scholarship money from Kaiser. Interestingly enough, Kaiser, a medical insurance company, found that they needed to cut down their costs in the medical realm by helping to solve homelessness. In that time, in 2019, there were, trying to see if I look at my numbers, at the highest point that we have documented, where they were counting, one of the new things they did is they started counting the number of homeless in Fremont County every single month. That's something that has never been done before. So we actually know what we're dealing with, who we're dealing with. The count in 2019 was, the highest was 396 that were documented in Fremont County. Built for Zero, of those 396, they knew who they were, they knew their name, their phone numbers, what their needs were, what their struggles were, what their handicaps were, and what was keeping them from integrating back into society in a healthy way. Since that time, there's been a lot of aggressive efforts to meet those individual needs, name by name, person by person, because there's just not a one-size-fits-all solution. In March of 2022, that number has decreased by more than 50%, down to 149. Now of that 149, I think probably the saddest part is 39 of those are children, those are minors, these are families. So there's 20 households with children that are currently homeless. And I see a woman shaking her head that you don't believe those numbers. We actually believe that there's probably an additional 20% more homeless, because our homeless outreach obviously can't reach every single person that's out there in Fremont County. But they are pretty rigorous, because they understand that in order to solve homelessness, they've got to get out there and find out who they are and where they are and how they can fix this problem. We are seeing, probably since the months have been starting to get warmer, maybe an uptick, so it'll be interesting to hear from our homeless outreach to find out what they are seeing and the trends that they have for the, for the homeless population. But we have real-time data and data that is thorough and investigated. And so we really try to look for evidence-based solutions and based on data, some of our, the ways that we can tackle this the best. With that said, I would like to turn some time over to Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick to kind of get some education to the public as whole of what the city has been doing in the past couple of years. As we said, the multiplicity of resources or techniques to use, what, what we have been doing. If you could, please, give us a history.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I'd be glad to do that. In this discussion, it's important to remember that homelessness or the homeless do not belong to one overarching category, except that they currently do not have housing. There are really multiple subgroups within what we term homeless. We have people that are, you know, that are, need help in as far as mental services. We have people that are down on their luck through poor choices or mischance that result in homelessness. And we have people that choose that way of life, that for whatever reason, whether it's addiction to substances, alcohol or drugs, or sometimes the categories get a little blurry. You know, mental illness comes in there, and it's a little bit of a chicken and the egg problem, which, which really came first. Something, in addition, to keep in mind as we, as we go through this discussion that we're going to have here tonight, is that our constitution and the rights enumerated in it says that all citizens enjoy the right to move freely and join any community at will. An expression of this right is embodied in the following statement, "No federal, state, or local municipality may establish a rule, or an ordinance, or a law criminalizing homelessness." In dealing with this problem, the city has actually taken a whole lot of actions that sometimes aren't transparent as we're, as we're engaging in this discussion tonight. But really, we've kind of been using a carrot and a stick approach. You know, on, on the stick side of the ledger, council has prohibited the use of the stage at Veterans Park unless a permit is acquired. Previously, the homeless were using that as a shelter. There were several people, perhaps even groups, that hung out under that shelter. We've stopped that through the establishment of an ordinance. As part of, as part of that, and to help police and ensure compliance with that rule, we hired a park ranger that evaluates our parks on a daily basis, including our new park camp up at the Royal Gorge. We've made it a civil offense to block public rights of ways, such as sidewalks or medians, by panhandlers. The issue there, again, is constitutional. You cannot create a rule that prohibits people from being in public places. But you can prevent, if there's, public safety is implicated, there are things that you can do that we have done. We have prohibited camping on city-owned property. And that's kind of part of the reason for tonight's discussion, is because that prohibition stands right now. And without fixing that, then that takes away one of the tools that we have to address the homeless. We have moved code enforcement from planning and zoning to the Canyon City Police Department, allowing closer communication between those violations of codes that often the homeless seem to, to be guilty of. The code enforcement regulation itself has been strengthened. We have engaged in civil actions. The city council and the city has engaged in civil actions so that abandoned houses, often used for illicit activities, and often associated or populated by people considered homeless, can be acquired for remedial purposes. Remedial purposes in that, in this case, means tearing down that house and getting rid of that nuisance. We've also increased resources for our police department, including equipment, training, opportunities for staff and personnel. One of the things that we've done is, in our city parks, we've locked the bathrooms at night, because they were becoming a magnet for the homeless, and so we instituted that change. We do have, we'd have a campground. There is a fee required to camp there. Previous to that, it was open season for anybody that wanted to be there. But we instituted a fee to use that campground and have a campground host in place to make sure that we don't create a homeless encampment up there. On the carrot side of things, we've modified regulations so that group homes have been established to help with affordable housing. We've provided support for nonprofits and religious organizations that can provide services to citizens where traditionally, government has a poor track record. And I think that, from my perspective, I think that's an important thing that council has done. You know, some councils want to take on homelessness and, you know, have government take over and just be the total be-all and end-all as a solution for something like that. And we've seen towns and cities where that has happened, and it doesn't work. But we do want to support the people that are doing the good work and are helping solve this problem. In endeavoring to avoid constitutional problems that can arise when restricting the public's use of city property, the city via ordinance is providing safe outdoor spaces. That's, that's the subject of tonight's council action. Canyon City has been at the forefront in establishing a co-responder program, which you've heard about tonight. Prior to that, really, the, the only tools that we had for dealing with people in crisis and the homeless were law enforcement tools. And we have another, a whole nother program that we can now support and promote that, that helps homeless people in crisis get the help that they need. And that, what that does is that diverts them from our criminal justice system. Canyon City has provided support for the Child Advocacy Center, where abused children can receive support to work towards ensuring that children in the criminal justice system are not victimized again. The, the children of homeless seem, you know, just from the outside looking in, to suffer more from that than perhaps the general population. And so that's one of the things that we've done also. And with that, I'll turn my time back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you for that, that history of what council has been working towards. I would like to turn the time now to our attorney, Corey. We are under a lot of constraints in what we are able or not able to do regarding homelessness, whether it's through the state legislature. whether it's through the state legislature or the circuit courts. And I was wondering if you could please, for the benefit of everyone that's here tonight, maybe give us an overview of those limitations.
Certainly. And the Mayor Protem identified that you can't criminalize homelessness. And so there's actually case law out there that says, for example, you cannot enforce a camping ban if there is not adequate space in a shelter for homeless people to sleep, that that is cruel and unusual punishment under the Eighth Amendment to the Constitution. It's a case called Martin versus the City of Boise, for those of you that are interested, and the United States Supreme Court declined to review that case. And so that unfortunately means that we are at risk of that being applied to Canyon City and other communities that are attempting to use all the tools in the toolbox to address the negative impacts of the homeless population on the city. And so currently, that is the primary barrier to the city doing more on the enforcement side. Having said that, well, the Tenth Circuit, the court that applies to Canyon City, invalidated laws that prohibited panhandling. They basically said, if you are treating someone who asks for money different than you are treating someone that asks for directions, that's a violation of the First Amendment. So you can't enforce panhandling restrictions. What the city did to be creative in trying to address the impacts of folks that are out on the street corners is it said, you have to use your right of ways for their intended purpose, which is to move people along. So while you can't criminalize panhandling, what you can criminalize is if people aren't using the right of way for its intended purpose. So if they sit down, they lie down, they do anything other than use the right of way for its intended purpose, Canyon City adopted an ordinance that addresses that. But all the while, being wary of this issue, you can't criminalize homelessness. So that's on the government side. The only thing I would add for private individuals is what we're talking about is private property or public property and what the government can do. Nothing that I've talked about addresses what a private property owner can do to an unwanted individual on their property, whether homeless or not. So for example, if I own a Subway store and someone is coming into my store, they don't want to buy a sandwich, they just want to use the restroom, I am not under an obligation to allow them to use my restroom. And so I can use the trespass tool as a private property owner, call the police and say, this individual is not welcome here. Nothing in what we're talking about tonight impacts the ability of a private business owner, a private property owner, to protect their business, protect their property from the impacts of homelessness. The problem is that the government is constrained by the limitations that I identified in terms of how it enforces impacts on the community caused by homeless individuals. And if you're reading, for example, the Denver Post, you'll see that the City of Aurora is dealing with precisely the same issue right now and has the same constraints in terms of not having the shelter space, and it impacts their ability to enforce their outdoor camping ban. And so that's sort of where we are today, what the law requires.
Thank you. Can you also kind of go over about eviction notices? I mean, I'm going to, I'm going to ask the chief to talk about what he does if we get a complaint for someone who has private property. But if we have somebody that's on the Riverwalk that's camped up, what's the process? Because I've heard public say, oh, we're not allowed to evict them off of the public property, but we are and we do.
It is just a matter of making sure that they have a right to get their stuff. And so the city does have a process in place to give notice to people that they are not welcome on public property for these purposes, but we have to store their stuff. There is another case that says to not use that process, again, criminalizes homelessness. If you simply go down the Riverwalk and clean up a camping area, take their possessions, which may not seem valuable to us, but of course have found are valuable to them. So there is a process where you have to give them notice and ultimately store their stuff. But they can be removed over time. But I add again that the city runs the risk, if it enforces its outdoor camping ban, for example, on the Riverwalk, and doesn't have shelter space, that even that is at risk of being challenged as criminalizing homelessness if there's nowhere for them to sleep in the community.
Thank you. Chief, I'm going to turn some time over to you next. I know we've had a lot of complaints and concerns about the safety of the Riverwalk. And we have, excuse me, my allergies are so bad. But, and talk about if, because we have had encampments along the Riverwalk. And just for clarification for the public, there is a very small portion of the Riverwalk that Canyon City has jurisdiction over, that Canyon City owns. A majority of it is in the county and is operated and maintained by the Canyon City Parks and Recreation District. But we do have control over Canyon City's park, which is mainly kind of like from Tunnel Drive to the Surgery Center, basically, is our portion. What do we do when we find a homeless encampment in that area?
Madam Mayor, members of council, it is very much in line with what Mr. Hoffman, our city attorney, painted there. We have to be respectful of the constitutional issues and the case law surrounding this issue. It is a, it is a very slippery slope. Anytime we deal with a homeless individual in that capacity and we look to charge them with a crime and take their property, we are responsible for them, we are responsible for their property. And we always run the risk that we're, as Mr. Hoffman indicated, criminalizing homelessness. Nonetheless, when we see those things or we get reports of folks along the Riverwalk, camping, building a place of abode, storing their items, we work diligently to move them along and avoid the criminal process if we can. And we have, from time to time, went down there with parks personnel and relocated their materials to our impound lot where we hold on to them as long as we're required and return it to them when they are able to retrieve them. We work with the homeless individuals to find resolutions. We work through coresponders, we work through the external resource agencies that we work with to try and find a more permanent resolution. That can be a daunting process in itself. I can recall an incident last year where we had some individuals up behind Sherman Williams, and my patrol sergeants and two patrol officers spent the better part of a twelve-hour shift trying to resolve that for the community, ultimately successful, but they had a number of obstacles to work through and work over to relocate that individual and relieve that segment of the community of the harm and despair that they were facing. So it is absolutely an item that we're not afraid to tackle. I just want the community to understand that these constraints that we're faced with make it very difficult for us from time to time to handle these situations. And I would like to say on the record that I've only been here since November of two thousand and twenty. I started, I went to Loaves and Fishes and saw what they were doing and I asked a question about data. I wanted to know how many homeless calls we were dealing with before the situation at Loaves and Fishes, before Journey Home, to see if those made a measurable impact in the community, and nobody could tell me. So at that time, we started a process. I had Corporal Snyder talk with our records management system and design a feature that would allow us to tag homeless calls internally. And then I worked with the director of FreeCom, Bill Dugan, about getting our CAD system to do the same thing. And I can only report that data that we've captured since then. But I can tell you, since we started recording that data, these numbers seem very low compared to the numbers that were reported to me when I checked on as your chief. In fact, Commander Van Dyke can recall a situation where there was a homeless individual that he helped move or transition from homelessness into rehab over several months. But I think at that time, he said that individual alone was responsible for more than two hundred police calls for service in a year. And I can tell you, we are just over that as a, as a, as a group now. We don't, we're not seeing those types of individuals consuming police resources. Last year, we had two hundred and eighty-five calls total in the city. And this year, we're probably on track for that as well. But that's significantly less than I suspect we were dealing with before all of these, as Mayor Protem said, before we got all these tools in our toolbox to work at minimizing or mitigating homelessness.
I would reiterate that. I remember, I remember, I was here when you were one of our very first co-responders, and that one individual, it was two hundred calls, just for one individual. Times that by all the other homelessness that we had during that time in the upper three hundreds is pretty significant. Veterans Park alone was getting ten to fifteen calls, like, every single day. It seems to be, I don't know, you can tell me, has Veterans Park settled down as far as?
Oh, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Since we've created the new ordinances.
Yeah, we're not seeing those things that we were seeing routinely before that. And I don't know, I don't, I don't get out of the office as much as I'd like, but I do get occasion to grab lunch, and he usually takes me past Orchard and Fremont. And that intersection is not as active, nowhere near as active as it used to be in terms of panhandling. The calls that we would get from business owners on Main Street with individuals, you know, laying in the street or in the alleys, blocking their businesses, we're getting, we're getting fewer and fewer of those calls. I drove myself, probably three weeks ago, I drove the alleyways behind the businesses on Main Street, looking to see if I could find anybody laying in doorways and that sort of thing. And I was unable in that, it was five o'clock in the morning, four-thirty in the morning. So I think what Canyon City and City Council is doing is having the desired effect. I know at times, the community sees the issues associated with homelessness firsthand. They're not always very attractive, and it's hard to appreciate the strides and the successes that the city has had. But I, the data doesn't lie. I think we're dealing with less and less, and I think if we continue in this pursuit, that footprint's going to get smaller and smaller. And I go back to DeeDee Clemens and the gentleman that she had with her the last time here before council at first reading, talking about those successes with the people inside, you know, those temporary spaces that we talked about, having those dedicated resources coming in. There were, there were a couple stories of sobriety and transitional houses and those types of things. I don't think those things happen without that space.
Thank you, Chief. I'd like to get some feedback from you because homelessness is often everywhere. I mean, we've had times where we'll get a phone call from the library, like, oh, they must have kicked the homeless out of the Black Hills property at the Clark Station cause else, and they all showed up at Macon Plaza. Well, they had just got kicked off, first they were Eagle Trailhead, then they went to Black Hills, and now they're at Macon Plaza, then they end up behind Sherwin-Williams. And then you spend twelve hours trying to help those folks behind Sherwin-Williams to get to a good place. And just to show the complexities of it, from what I've heard is from one of those individuals, you know, we found a place for them to go up to Colorado Springs, we provide transportation, here you go, we're going to take you up to Colorado Springs, here's resources for you to make a new life for yourself up here. And before the person who gave them a ride up to Colorado Springs got home, that individual is already back in Canyon City again. And it's, there's never an easy, easy solution. But as we have maybe folks here or at the Hogbacks, Eagle, Eagle Trailhead, or nestled in at the Riverwalk, your police officers are going everywhere. Mental health clinicians are going everywhere. Rocky Mountain Behavioral Health is going everywhere. Can you give me, and this is probably anecdotal at this point, but when we did have, I mean, what was it, like, seven to eight individuals at a time? I think it was a total of nineteen the whole time. We're not talking about a big number. That was at this temporary kind of experimental shelter. How did that help you as a CCPD and your officers? And how did that help the clinicians to be able to have better access to their lives?
Well, I can, I can certainly, it's hard, it's hard to project where we would be without it, but I can, I'm confident in saying that I think it helped us, helped us to identify the specific needs of each of those individuals and steer the right resources in their, in their direction. We, as a PD, were able to make a direct connection with them in a different capacity, wherein we're not responding to calls for service where they are, you know, infringing on somebody's property or something like that. It's non-adversarial, so the relationship is different between our officers and the folks there at the SOS. And, you know, having them there, be it ten, twelve, nineteen, well, that's ten, twelve, or nineteen that aren't at Macon Plaza, that aren't at Veterans Park, that aren't at these places that we had substantial problems at. So I think it definitely, again, is a tool in the toolbox because we can't, we cannot arrest our way out of this issue.
And on the clinical side, I'd like to address that. Also on social services aspect, for our case managers and our peers and the clinicians, our substance abuse clinicians, as well as mental health clinicians, it has been imperative to be able to literally walk out the front door of three-two-two-five, walk down Independence, and be able to check in on these people on a daily basis, or for them to know that we're literally right there if they need us. It has been invaluable, I know, to our case managers who have built relationships with these individuals, you know, these are people who are resistant to receive any support, any help, and then they took that first step to say, okay, I'm willing to try SOS because you've been giving me meals every Tuesday and you seem like nice people, maybe I'll give that SOS thing a try. And then after they give SOS a try, they get to know Loaves and Fishes, and then there's room in Loaves and Fishes, and they say, you know, maybe I'm willing to stay in the shelter, this one doesn't seem so bad. And then they say, you know what, those people over at Journey Home, they look like they've got it, you know, going, I want that. And then they can transition from the homeless shelter to a forever home, if that's what they choose. Or they can work with UACOG, who goes over there every day and works with them to complete BI Spit Ads so that they can qualify for housing vouchers and grants. I mean, there is a slew of people that are constantly in contact if we can find them. If we don't have a place where they know they can go that's safe, we've lost all of that traction. We've lost all of that forward momentum because now they're scattered back to the winds, and now we've got to find them again. And thankfully, some of them are going to still pop in and come down to Loaves and Fishes for maybe their weekly box or for a meal or two, and maybe hopefully they'll get a chance to hear about whatever new programs are coming up. But, you know, right now, it's on a bunch of hopes, and I want them to know that there's a place that they can go and that they and that they can receive all of those important life-changing services like mental health and substance abuse.
Thank you. And Chief, I did want to just touch base because I have a feeling that there's some folks that are concerned about homeless people on private property. And we have had people call and contact you, contact me, having issues on their business property or personal property with homelessness. Can you go through what we do in those instances?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor. It is, it's a common pursuit that we take. We try to start with education and encouragement, and then if necessary, enforcement. Just today, you and I received an email from an individual. And, you know, the thing I can't stress enough, I hear these things all the time out in the community. You know, I had one here, I had one there. And I think people assume that, you know, we know where the homeless are at in every instance. And I can't say enough to each of those individuals, when you come across these situations, be it on the Riverwalk, be it downtown, be it in your neighborhood, to call and get us out there and get us involved. Our common pursuit is going to be to try and relocate them. Like I said, we can't arrest ourselves out of this, you know. And as Mayor Pro Tim pointed out, the bail legislative endeavors, you know, and petty offenses, they're not going to stay in jail. They're not going, you know, they're not going to go to jail and stay there. So it's pointless to try and arrest them. We would like to steer them towards places like this encampment or shelters, safeguard their belongings so that they don't lose it. By law, we have to, aside from the fact that it's the right thing to do. And try and work with them to resolve this. Arresting them, sending them to jail for two hours and having them come back out, try and locate another place to be, and then try and regain their property after we've collected it and put it in the impound lot. It's a magnitude of issues. So, but if we have to, we absolutely will charge them with a crime. We will arrest them, we'll take them down. Rest assured, they're going to get bail or bond and they're going to be back out, but they'll have that charge hanging over them. And, but again, we have to get those notifications from folks because we don't know where they are all the time.
So we do need to have reports.
Yes, ma'am.
If you've seen an encampment, let us know.
Call us.
We can get an officer out there and we can start the process.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
I do want to give an example of the Bank of San Juans on 9th and Highway 50. For a while, there were a number of issues with homelessness at the Train Depot Park, which was public property. Whenever they were on their private property, we could be there and do something because it was trespassing.
Yes, ma'am.
But when they were on the public property, it got a little more tricky. And I would say, maybe we need to add this to your list of things that we did. It's because the tree branches were so low. And there was also access to electricity for the Christmas lights that you could peek in through the trees and there'd be homeless people, you know, with things plugged in. And so electricity was turned off. But we also cut the branches off of the tree so there's no longer a safe haven of hiding there. And so there's also things that we can do on our public property, but also make recommendations to private property to create a space that is not comfortable or conducive for homeless wanting to spend time there. And that's something we've actively do.
And thinking outside the box, those initiatives have reduced that footprint there at the park significantly.
I would like to invite, we've asked for a representative from Built for Zero and from Solvista Health. There's a lot of people out in the audience. If DeeDee Clemens is here, oh, there she is. And if you have a Solvista Health partner, I'd like for you to please give a report on the temporary shelter and what Built for Zero has been doing over the last few years.
I've also asked Lori.
Sure, both come up, each take a microphone.
So we just put together a really quick PowerPoint presentation that just kind of talks about some of the numbers and things that we've been talking about already. So again, thank you, Madam Mayor and council members, for giving me this opportunity to share with you about the work that's been done here to end homelessness in our community. What I would say is sort of what Madam Mayor already had mentioned is that prior to 2019, we did not have a very good way of tracking the number of people experiencing homelessness on a consistent basis. We relied on an annual count that was conducted in January of every single year. And as you can imagine, that count was only really good, gave us a snapshot for that one night, but it wasn't very good data that was collected overall. In 2019, we were a community that was selected to be part of the Built for Zero movement. And we started receiving technical assistance from Community Solutions. And Community Solutions is a nationwide nonprofit that is working with other, about 98 other communities across the United States to help them end homelessness. So we're very fortunate to be part of that collaboration. And once we became a Built for Zero community, that's when we saw the shift happen. That's when we noticed our numbers were drastically decreasing and we actually had plans in place in order to make that happen. Okay. So this is the slide that Madam Mayor mentioned about the numbers. You can see that right now, today, we have 190, sorry, 194. And we, you'll notice that in January, we were actually at 396. So from January of 2020 until today, we've actually seen a reduction in our numbers by over 60%. And we really trust these numbers because of the process that we've learned through Community Solutions, where we actually do something called a housing assessment, where we sit down with every single person who is experiencing homelessness and we collect at least 19 different data points on that person to try to identify what they need to get into housing. Loaves and Fishes does these housing assessments, but there are other several agencies with across our community that also do these housing assessments. And so I feel pretty confident that this is a good representation of the number of people that are experiencing homelessness. So some of the things that we've just been doing, as I've said already, we currently now have a real-time by-name list of who is experiencing homelessness. So what that means is we actually have a list of individuals. We have contact information, we know their income, we know if they have a disability. We know if they have an eviction, we know if they have income, we know if they have children, all kinds of things. So we can best help them move forward with their next step. The other thing that we're doing is every week, we are meeting with at least seven other agencies and talking specifically about our veterans and those individuals that already have a housing resource. And the purpose of that weekly meeting is for us to identify the next step for them to get into housing. So we're working with landlords, we're getting applications, figuring out how we can come up deposits, all that kind of stuff. And then twice a month, we have another group that meets, there's about five agencies, that meet and talk about people who are chronic. And so chronic are the ones that are a little bit more challenging. They have been homeless longer, oftentimes, or they all have some type of disability. And twice a month, this group brainstorms by name every single person on that list and tries to figure out what the next step to get them into housing. Mayor Smith has already talked about all the work that our outreach team has done. They go out at least three times a week. We have Department of Human Services, we have Loaves and Fishes, United Methodist Church, consistently go out every single week. Plus, there's just other individuals in our community that go out and just provide meals and things to people who are experiencing homelessness. We also were able to hire some key people in order for us to make all this work happen. And so one of them is a housing navigator. So UACOG was actually able to hire a housing navigator. And her job is to find housing for people who are experiencing homelessness. So she works closely with landlords, she works closely with these individuals, help them submit their applications, all those things to help them get into housing. We've also been able to hire a case manager, which is Lori, you'll hear from her shortly. And then we're, Department of Human Services also hired our street outreach case manager. And then we also have someone who is overall responsible for all the work that we're doing for Built for Zero. There's a lot of things involved to end homelessness, as you can imagine. And so this person kind of coordinates all of that to make sure that we are on the right track. We continually get technical assistance from Community Solution. Marcy mentioned earlier today, there's a team of four of us that are going to Chicago for a learning session for Built for Zero that happens next week. We are excited about that. We're hoping to come back with a lot of new tools that we could start using in our community. Some of the things that we're working towards, our ongoing efforts, is landlord engagement. We know that we need to do a better job of working with landlords and how can we entice landlords to work with us? So we're brainstorming about that. We're also looking at just recruitment. There are some landlords that we've never met and we want to get to know them and see if there's a way that we can place some of our individuals in their homes. We're also working with helping individuals who are experiencing homelessness get their important documents. It is impossible to rent an apartment unless you have a picture ID, social security card, and some apartment complexes actually require you to have a birth certificate. Again, you can imagine someone who is experiencing homelessness, having to be moved over and over and over, outside in the rain, snow, sun, all that. Their documents get lost, they get stolen, they get ruined. And so part of what we do, part of what this team is doing, is trying to help them gather those documents. And then the other thing that we're trying to put together is how can we involve people with lived experience? So people who have been homeless, who now have a house, how can we get them to help us solve the problem? How can we get them to maybe come out with us and do street outreach? They understand it probably better than anyone, right, that they were just there. And so one of the things that when we go to this learning session, they actually have put together a special group just for Fremont County for us to talk to people who are using people with lived experience in other communities across the United States. So we're going to hopefully come back with, again, with a lot of great information on how we can move forward with that. Oh, there we go. Oh, sorry, I'm going the wrong way. All right. So one of the things that oftentimes gets asked is who is actually homeless? And so this is a slide that says that. Gosh. You will notice that we often get asked, they're new to our community, and that's really not true. There are people that are new to our community. We can move around, some of us are new to this community, right? And so, but the reality is, is that those folks that we've identified as homeless in our community, 70% of them are Fremont County residents, they have lived here for a year or longer. The other thing that I thought was really interesting, when we looked at the length of time of homelessness, you will see that most of them, 36% in 2021 and 26% in 2022, actually found themselves homeless. Some of it is due to COVID, some of them, they lost their job, some of it is their apartment, maybe their rent got increased or whatever. And so I just thought that was an interesting statistic, that the folks that are experiencing homelessness in our community aren't necessarily, there are some in our community that have been homeless five or more years. But the reality is, is many of them have not been homeless that long, maybe only a few years. You'll also see, you'll also see that 37% of them report having some type of income. 61 of them report that they have a disability. And this is another great fact here, and I think this is a lot of, because of what the outreach team has been doing, is 81% of the folks that have completed this assessment with us have said that they are connected to a service. And when I say service, what I mean is they're connected with Department of Human Services, they're connected with Rocky Mountain Behavioral Health, Gateway, Solvista Health, those types of agencies, not Loaves and Fishes. They're connected to a service provider helping them move forward with their life. So what is a safe outdoor space? I know we've talked a lot about that, and this is just a really, really brief slide. And I know that many of you have read the ordinance, so you have a much more detailed slide or detailed explanation of what a safe outdoor space is. But safe outdoor space provides a safe place for people to stay when there is no room in a shelter or when they're not able to come into the shelter, or they're not ready to come into the shelter. One of the things we talked about the last time that we were here was that, for some, it is a big step for them to move into the SOS. Many of them, and Solvista Health is going to speak to this, but many of them have various traumas in their life. Where coming into the SOS is a big step. And as they get to know the service providers that are working with them, then from there, they're able to move into our emergency shelter or move into housing. The other thing that the safe outdoor spaces provide is there is resources and there's services and case management. They would not be successful unless we have that because it's not a free-for-all. It's not a campsite that just pops up. This is very intentional. As Madam Mayor mentioned, there's a contract they're signed. There were some valuable lessons that we learned from our test SOS. And the last slide here will actually talk about the results of that test. But it's very intentional, it's very structured, there's oversight, there's monitoring, and it provides that place for people to kind of move forward with their life. And so again, it's not like, it's not a free-for-all. So I have the SOS treatment slide.
Please introduce yourself.
Yes, absolutely. Hello, everybody. My name is Nikki Reynolds and I'm a care manager at Solvista Health in the Substance Use Disorder and Criminal Justice Department. I, along with fellow care manager John Gordon over there in the striped shirt, we are one of a few that do weekly contacts with SOS residents. And the purpose behind those contacts is to check in, to help them remain engaged in services and treatment services, and also to review what their basic needs are, needs that aren't met. And so we collaborate with partnering agencies, UACOG, DHS, and other treatment clinics to address those basic needs because it's very difficult oftentimes for somebody in recovery to really focus on recovery when their basic human needs are not being met. And one of the key pieces to the SOS with its previous location is it was so close to so many agencies. So it made it easier for people just to walk to where they needed to go. We also have peer specialists too, people that have a recovery story of their own that outreach these residents. And the goal there is relatability, right, and to help build that trust. Like Marcy mentioned earlier, a lot of the challenge that we witness, we observe is the need for these individuals to rebuild their trust. They have had things stolen. Society has turned their back on them when they've been in need. And so just them choosing to live there has taken so much courage. And so the weekly outreach is help rebuild that trust. Oh, another benefit, and DeeDee touched on this briefly, recovery is a long-term process. So the SOS is designed to respect the recovery process, meaning we meet individuals where they're at. So if they choose to start their work on recovery, that's humongous. But it doesn't mean that they're going to be recovered in a week. So, you know, relapse is part of the recovery process. And the SOS area, as long as they're engaged with services and they are working on their goals, this gives them that safe place to accept the relapse and problem-solve with their case manager or their peer about what they'll do differently next week or the next day even. So that's really been such a key to supporting individuals in recovery. And then the last component I've included, John and I have included, is the community of mutual support. So addiction thrives in isolation and homelessness. SOS provides the opportunity to feel accepted and be inspired by neighbors who understand the struggle. So there is often a lot of people in the SOS that are all working on recovery. And there may be an individual that hasn't started the recovery process. Maybe they're connected to another agency just for housing and they may come forward just by witnessing and observing somebody taking those courageous steps to engage in treatment. and they may come forward just by witnessing and observing somebody taking those courageous steps to engage in treatment.
Lori Stone, who is Loews and Fishes Street Outreach. We put a slide together. She talks a lot with people who are experiencing homelessness, obviously pretty much every single day. And so this slide just kind of represents their voice, like some of the things that they just want the city council to know and the people in the audience also to know.
Good evening. My name is Lori Stone. I'm an Outreach Case Manager for Loews and Fishes. Even though my desk is at Loews and Fishes, my clients are the people that are homeless and not staying in our shelter. I work with them on a daily basis, and you can find me most places you can find your homeless population. I see people here that are on the city council, the police department, mental health people, Solvista, concerned citizens, but what I don't see here are the actual homeless people that we're talking about. I would like to take this time to speak for them. I know them very well, and I know their views and things. The first point is none of us dreamed of becoming homeless. This is not how I want to live my life. When you ask someone if this is a dream they had for their life and where their life was going to be, no one would say, I want to be a homeless person. There is not one story that covers every person that is homeless. Every homeless person has a different story or a combination of stories. The next is finding a home without assistance is difficult. Once a person finds themselves homeless, it is difficult to go back to being housed. That is why it is so important to have a safe place to stay. With the team of people that help us, we not only get a meal, they help get our documents we would need to rent an apartment. These documents include an ID, social security card, and a birth certificate. Each one of these documents are processed to get. If we had one location to find all of us that are homeless, this process could be more successful. Once we have the documents, we go on a waiting list for apartments. As many of you know, there is a shortage of low-income apartments. Just because you have your documents doesn't mean you automatically get a place to live. It can be months or even years before an apartment becomes available. Having a safe place to set up camp would make it easier to find us when a person's name comes up for a voucher. Three, traumatic events in my life have resulted in me becoming homeless. Traumatic events are different for every person. Some of us are homeless because of an addiction problem or mental health. It can be very hard to get into treatment or even find a doctor that is willing to help with mental illness. Not having a safe place to be, to get help from the different services, to get in to see a doctor or to get into detox or a rehab facility can be next to impossible. Just getting to a pharmacy to pick up a prescription is very difficult. Some of us are homeless because of a house fire and lost everything. There are those of us who are homeless because we lost a job and can no longer pay our bills. When I first started working for Loews and Fishes, there was a gentleman that was homeless through no fault of his own. He came to Canyon City to visit family. He had a stroke, ended up with open-heart surgery, and then ended up in our shelter because he had no place else to go. Through a lot of work, we were able to get him housed, but only because he was in the shelter. Obviously, we don't have room for every single person in the shelter. So having this safe place for them to be would be easier than trying to find them for every piece of paper that needs to be signed. Not all of us are drug addicts or dangerous. We have families, college degrees, ran our own businesses. We have been and desire to, again, be productive members of the community. The reality is, some of us are addicts, but there are people who are homeless that struggle with the same issues. They just have not lost everything. There are those of us who have very little education, but you will also find homeless people who have not just college education but a master's degree. For those who think we are dangerous, to be honest, we don't care about the people that walk by us. We are not thinking, how can we rob them or hurt them? We are just thinking about, how can we just survive another day? Having a place to stay outside where we do not need to worry about our stuff being stolen or we are asked to move along throughout the week, we can be asked to move along many times. We are told we cannot stay where we are, but we are not given a place where we can go. Having a place where we can leave our belongings, know they are safe, and know that we will not be asked to move along would be more than helpful. It could be life-changing. We know there are people who don't want us on their private land, in their alleys, on their doorsteps of their businesses. So where do you want us to go? Moving all of us who are homeless to another community is not an option. More homeless will just move in. Having a safe place to stay can make it so we are not in a place where we are not wanted. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anything else for us, DeeDee, as we wind up?
I just wanted to show the last slide with just those SOS. So the SOS, the test pilot started in September and ended in April. We had a total of twenty-six campers. Out of those twenty-six campers, fifteen of them found housing. That's remarkable. One of them is currently in our shelter. Five of them, we're not sure. One of them is still, we know, on the streets. Two of them moved out of state, one in jail, and one passed away. But fifteen of them found a place to live. Thank you, ma'am.
So I would ask that all of you that helped give us some education tonight stay during the proceedings so that if there are questions from the audience, that we have some experts to answer those questions. And I'd also like to point out that we also have Officer Zabruski on Zoom. Officer Zabruski is our park ranger who monitors our portion of the Riverwalk as well as our mountain parks and other parks in Canyon City and has a lot of face-to-face contact with the homelessness. Counselor, yes?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I would just suggest we have many, many requests for people to speak tonight. We, I believe, we're going to allow three minutes per person. And so I, but I would ask, my request for you is if your points have been made by someone else that you pass on the opportunity to speak, you're more than welcome to speak. And we do want to hear from anyone that has something to say to us. But in the interest of time, we hope that we just don't end up hearing the same speech over and over. Thank you.
I would just like to give a reminder, as we do have a lot of people wishing to speak to city council, that we do have a code of conduct. Conducting the city's business in an atmosphere of respect and civility is an underlying theme in this code. City council members are responsible for holding themselves, the staff, and the public accountable for displaying actions and behaviors that consistently model the ideals expressed in the code. To consistently demonstrate principles of professionalism, respect, decorum, and civility in working for the greater good of Canyon City. To commit to working with city officials, staff, and the public in a conscientious and respectful manner. Refrain from abusive conduct or verbal attack and/or harassment directed at the city council staff or the public. Avoid objectively offensive comments. And listen courteously and attentively to all public discussions and treat all people the way you wish to be treated. I'd also like to reiterate that, excuse me, that during city council meetings, we ask that there's no applause or yelling or shouting out, that we give everybody the equal opportunity to have their three minutes to speak, and then we'll move on to the next one. We do have, I said a list. You have three minutes each. There, thank you. I'm such a mess tonight. There's a little green, yellow, and red button on there. So green, you have your three minutes. Thirty seconds left is yellow. Red, your time is up. And I will read your name in the order that these were received. I would also ask, as I have received, and Chief too, throughout the time, some complaints about homelessness. So far, most of the ones that I have received have all been places that are actually in the county and not in the city. And so I would like to know if you are from, if you live in the county or if you live in the city. Even if you live in the county, we do always our best to connect you to the county resources or to the appropriate officials to help you with that. And we'd also like to say that I have reached out to the county commissioners to ask if we could have a joint meeting with the county commissioners to be more collaborative in our approach and strategies for addressing and tackling homelessness. And they have agreed to do so, which is encouraging because it is, excuse me, very difficult when our boundaries in urban between city and county are so close. And so we really appreciate the county being willing to give that time to meet with us. We're going to start first with Lisa Danny Roberts.
Thank you for the education that you gave us tonight. I really appreciate it. I have a couple of questions. Obviously, this is a very, very difficult problem. You're going to hear a lot of frustration tonight. I live in Canyon City. What can I do? I mean, it's easy to come in and say, why didn't you do this? And this person's on my walkway. But I'm a person who lives in town. What do you need the community to do to help you with this?
DeeDee, can you please come and talk? I know there's a number of volunteer positions that you're, that are in need.
We are always looking for the homeless outreach volunteers to deliver meals, to help with showers. I was just filling in until DeeDee.
Thank you for wanting to be part of the solution. So absolutely, everything that Marcy said, we're always looking for volunteers to do street outreach. The other thing is, is if you actually want to kind of walk along someone who is experiencing homelessness, we'd love for you to join our case conferencing. And what we do is we match people up. We call them buddies. And so we could buddy you with someone who is currently experiencing homelessness, and you would help that person move into housing. That's another way. We're also getting ready to open our emergency shelter to thirty-eight beds, hopefully, in May. We need help with meals and just help just coming into our emergency shelter. And just, again, what we have discovered is relationships are essential, as they are for all of us, right? We all need relationships. And building relationships with people experiencing homelessness goes a long way. And so that's some of the ways. And you can call me and I can tell you more.
DeeDee, do you have contact information for those that are interested in becoming like a mentor? Someone to walk beside a homeless, someone on their journey? Yeah, your contact information.
Yes. You want me to tell, give my number out? Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Thank you, okay. Seven one nine two seven five zero five nine three.
Thank you.
And I'd probably reiterate too, that, I mean, there's a lot of robust programs that help people to find jobs or to get into housing, but what they found is that walk, that journey needs to even go farther because a lot of folks, they do not have the life skills to keep the job or the life skills to stay in the housing. And so they need help to know, this is when you live inside these four doors, this is what your landlord expects of you, and this is the way you need to conduct and take care of your housing. Or if you have a conflict at your job, your new job, here are ways to deal with it instead of just doing fight or flight. And so thank you for, again, for being a part of the solution.
My second question is, and forgive my ignorance because I don't understand how these temporary shelters would work. There's, it appears to me that if they would be tents, that there would be a hygiene problem. I mean, are you ready to deal with a cholera outbreak if you have one?
Yes. So, I mean, we've already had to deal with COVID, right? So there's definitely robust systems for hygiene. The current one that we had has access to bathroom facilities and showers and laundry. And so the ordinance also requires that. Like I said, this has to be a well-managed and executed temporary solution that actually results in people bettering their lives.
And that's what I'm going to ask. When you say temporary, do they get a month? Do they get three months? In other words, what's to keep someone from living there for two years? Hey, it's free and I'm just going to...
The temporary part is that the shelter itself can only operate for six months, potentially six months out of the year. We don't even know if this is going to happen. Next year, I mean, we did an experiment last year. We don't know if we'll even do it next year. Maybe there won't be a need for it. But we did notice that in order to have compliance and to meet the rules and the regulations from the circuit courts, that we needed to have that option to have a place for beds if that was a need.
So what happens if one of your, whatever you want to call it, customers isn't compliant with the rules that you gave them for six months? What's that process?
There is a process, or Marcy if you want, either way, and there happens and that we're asked to leave.
Yes, when there's someone who is no longer following the rules, then they are asked to leave. If they choose not to leave, then they will be escorted out by the police. And they have to find somewhere else to go. They're no longer welcome at this SOS camp. This means if you brought harm to another resident or if you were harmed to the public, then it would be addressed. Most of the time, we didn't have those problems because we were able to have discussions with them because we had that rapport. And we were able to talk to them about, you know, what was the actual problem happening so that we could address that instead of the emotion that was coming out. So a lot of times, it's about mitigating those circumstances before they become something bigger. But for the most part, if they were asked to leave, they would do so.
That's very helpful. Thank you. I think also you're going to hear quite a bit tonight about people's frustration about, yes, you can't keep people off the streets, but they stand there and scream at us for money and yell obscenities. I mean, we came to live here because of what a wonderful place it is. And I think you're going to hear many of these people who've been harassed, who are afraid. I think the Riverwalk is a great example. I mean, it's the jewel for us here. And you will hear over and over again tonight how many people are afraid to use it. And that's just heartbreaking, you know? And so I understand, and I am really impressed with what you have done to deal with this problem. I didn't, for the life of me, understand it was that complex. So I appreciate your efforts. But I think also there's a lot of people who feel that they're working hard, they're paying their taxes. Why are these people harassing them on the streets? And why are they afraid to use what is public land? And I'm not the only one to speak, but I think you're going to hear that over and over again. And I know that it's not an easy job for the police. I know he says we can't arrest our way out of it. But man, you've got somebody who screams at you on the Riverwalk, screams obscenities, makes you afraid to even be there during the daytime hours. That's, that's just, it's heartbreaking. It just is really heartbreaking. And so I think that that's what the community is afraid of, is that if you put this shelter up, that you will bring more, it would be flypaper. And that they're going to say, well, how can we have all these other people?
Okay, your time is up. Thank you. And Chief, briefly, if someone encounters a homeless person, whether it's a Riverwalk or anywhere, and there someone's yelling obscenities at them or behaving in confrontational manner, what do you recommend?
Well, I recommend that they disengage and call us immediately and let us come down there and deal with those individuals. That's an unfortunate set of circumstances, but I would very much like to get involved early and engage them and try to resolve that situation. We've been very fortunate over the years. And at those two hundred and eighty-plus calls that I told you about, I went through the call logs. And very few of those calls, in fact, probably less than a dozen, were related to the Riverwalk. So either folks aren't calling us or they're happening in the county, not in the city, but they're not reflective in our call response. So the strongest message, the strongest terms I can suggest is to call us and get us engaged. We just trained and certified four officers for mountain bike patrols. You'll see them this week out at the festival and the parade. So we have every intention of outfitting them on the patrol vehicles so that we can do routine patrols periodically down the Riverwalk to make sure we don't have those encampments along there.
That's good to know. So it's an added service on the Riverwalk.
Yes, ma'am.
Corey, as our attorney, what would you say in address to those situations?
I just wanted to share something because I have the same. As someone who wrote the laws that were invalidated by courts related to this issue, even things like what is known as aggressive panhandling or panhandling by an ATM, those laws have been invalidated. I mean, courts are truly, in my view, tying our hands in the ability to enforce. So the chief's right that you should absolutely call the police, but I also don't want folks in here to have the misperception that that means that they're going to be charged with a crime. Because if someone is frankly just yelling, unless there is some sort of intent to harass and intent to harm, it's not a crime, even if it's next to an ATM. I mean, it's horrifying. And so, you know, judges make those decisions and we have to live by them, and we have to... And we have to come up with creative alternatives to try to address the impacts on the community. But it is frustrating for those of us that frankly write the laws to assist Canyon City City Council that there are a lot of things we cannot do anymore because courts have told us we can't.
Officer Zabrowski, would you mind unmuting yourself because you do patrol the Riverwalk? And can you kind of give us an idea of what you do and what you see and what you recommend to people who have just, dangerous encounters or very, very frightening encounters?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, thanks for the invite. What I have done over the past near year and a half is typically I'll do the, hit the parks first, Veterans Park, Centennial Park. I'll park my vehicle at Centennial Park. And then I'll walk the Riverwalk from First Street to Ninth Street. Very seldom do I run across an encampment that one hasn't even, has already been reported. Or I will see just an empty space, or I'm sorry, empty encampment, nobody there. When I go back the next day, it's still empty. So we just turn that over to either parks with our CSOs. And they take care of the rest of it. But you got to realize too, that not only the Riverwalk, I have Red Park, Mountain View Park, which is starting to sustain a lot of damage. So my time is split, but for the most part, if you see my patrol car parked in Centennial Park, I'm down there somewhere and you can easily find me.
Thank you, Officer Zabrowski. Next, we'll hear from Will Cullen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. Before you start my three minutes, can I approach the bench and give you guys some eye candy to look at?
Give it to Cindy and she'll distribute it for you.
It's hard to explain the homeless problem without pictures.
Where are these pictures taken at?
Most of these pictures are taken on my family's property or just over the edge of the property. You asked us to identify where-
It's in the county, though?
Some of these pictures are in the county. Some of them are right over the fence in the city. We're in a very unique situation. We're right on the boundary. So when I call the police department, they can't really do much. And when I call the sheriff's department, they can't do anything either. So we're left to police ourselves. Oh, I guess you guys are starting to clock. All right, let me get to it then because I've got a lot to talk about. First off, as you guys know, we're the property I'm talking about.
Let me interrupt just a second. Would you please restart his time because we've been-
Thank you, John.
...administrative things.
Thank you.
Please, go ahead. Continue.
So again, my name is Will Cullen. Thank you. We do have property that is very close to, or actually border, Lowe's and Fish's, Journey Home, and the tent camp that you guys previously have. John gave a nice history. I'm going to give my view of the history. Dee does a great job with Lowe's and Fish's. She does a really good job. Gets a lot of money, gets a lot of people coming here. When that fills up, you guys build Journey Homes. Journey Homes filled up, you guys built some more. You guys have the Tent City, adding on to Lowe's and Fish's. These are all great things from your point of view. The more you build, the more they come. And they come in droves. I have to patrol my property at least once a week, if not, and in the summertime, two or three times a week. Some of these pictures that you guys are looking at, this is your Tent City. Okay, notice the no dumping sign? This is a picture of syringes in Formosa Creek. This is pictures of a latrine underneath a Four Mile Bridge, next to my property, where they poop right in the water. If I did that, I think you guys would probably send someone down. Here's a camp under one of the bridges. These are all really nice pictures. This is my property. This is where they come and poop on my property. Okay? So it'd be wrong for me to come here and not have solutions, okay? I think we know that there's another side of homelessness that you guys haven't talked about tonight. You guys talked about the rainbows and unicorns portion of it, but you don't get to live right next to it. You don't get to see it every day. I've been assaulted in the last 10 days by a homeless person. I've had him come on my property and throw trash, vandalism, poop on my property, all in the last 10 days. I'm not talking in the last 10 years, which we've been fighting this. I'm talking in the last 10 days, okay? When I asked for charges to be pressed against someone who told me they were going to kill me on my own property for kicking them off, nothing happens. No charges.
Was that with the CCPD or the sheriffs?
They were both there.
Well, but it was-
What was the jurisdiction?
Jurisdiction would have been the county. But they're in the same boat. Nobody can do anything. And they even, both the sheriff's deputies and the police department, and I don't take this lightly, laugh and joke about the fact that they have their hands tied. I don't feel bad. I mean, I don't blame the police department. I don't blame the others. Let me get on, I'm losing time here. We need solutions, right? State hospital down here in Pablo, not running at capacity. That's where a lot of our mental issues could possibly go. Because I like to give ideas. It'll be quick again. Maybe we should stop giving out all, everything we do. Maybe, it doesn't sound like we need it. Homelessness is going down from what I just heard. And third, I went around town today and found some other possibilities. I think we should spread out the issue. Why is it always in my neighbor's backyard? I did go through and find some places. There's a really nice lot up at 96 Eagle Crest. Big lot, two lots actually. Lots of space there. Found one on Dewey Road. Not as big, not as nice, but when they overflow, they could go over to the high school. There's lots of fields there.
I'm sorry, Will, but your time is up.
Baldwin Avenue. Coates has some great fields.
Sorry, Will. I know you've had, you and your property have extremely, sorry. We will have order, please, out of respect to all that are here. I was saying that you've definitely probably see the brunt of homelessness more than probably any other population. And we do feel for that. And you are right, as we were doing these presentations, that there is another side of homelessness. And that is sometimes the more brutal side that is the most infuriating that- We will move on to Tim Krantz.
Hello, my name is Tim Krantz. I am Will Cullen's neighbor, except for I'm on the city side at 3125 and 3135 Grandview. So we share the fence with the Cullen property, as well as the Four Mile Creek frontage. I actually live across the street in the county at 3170 Grandview. But the majority of the property that I own is on the north side of Grandview, inside of the city limits. I am briefly, well, I won't reiterate what Will said, but obviously, we experience the exact same thing that Will has. And interestingly, I feel I have a unique perspective on this issue. I've spent well over two decades, I worked for the city Colarus Springs as a firefighter and a paramedic. And I've spent about 22 years working on the Highway 24 corridor, which is the Fountain Creek drainage, which is where they experience the majority of their homelessness. And I've watched 20 years of plans to create temporary shelters and eventually essentially move everybody into a sacrificial piece of property that runs from, you know, Las Vegas on the south side, to Bijou, to Sierra Madre, over to Weber, where we had several what were once temporary shelters, what were once warming shelters, have become complexes, just like Will said, the Springs Rescue Mission, which once was a high-barrier shelter with all the same things that you folks are discussing about how we were going to progress people into homes, which I think is excellent. Really, I've dedicated my professional life to serving this clientele. I'm not in any way judging them. But what I've seen is there's a population that lives on the outside of that. And that population is unwilling, for whatever reason. And I heard some compelling reasons tonight. But from whatever reason, they're not willing to comply with the regulations, the shelters. And they begin creating their own tent communities. As you've, if you ever driven down Las Vegas before they put the large boulders there, there was an entire tent community right across the street from the Springs Rescue Mission, which was a no-barrier shelter. And I don't want to see that happen to our beautiful city. And we're already starting to see that happen. And there's really, obviously, this is a complex issue. And I applaud the city leadership or the forward-thinking of the co-response and getting ahead of this issue. But I really caution, from what I've seen, making a change to the camping ordinance and adding outdoor housing, concentrating in an area instead of diffusing this problem throughout the city so everyone's equally impacted and everybody's equally motivated to find solutions. I'm worried about that. That's what I've seen happen to Dorchester Park and the bowling alley next to Dorchester Park and all those businesses north of I-25 on South Nevada that have closed because of this issue. It affects the businesses, the homeowners, the city property. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Corey, can you help address maybe some of those comments? Because we've had conversations where, when there's the unsavory side of homelessness, that can't be more brutal and confrontational, that having some of these tools is actually a way that we can address those. Like if we can channel those who actually want resources to SOS or, but those who say, no, don't want it, leave me alone, I just want to be a pest.
I'm not sure I'm the person to talk about the policy issues, frankly. I mean, the issues, I don't know what the answer is. I know what tools are in the toolbox and which ones have been held to be invalid. The only thing I can tell you about this tool is that part of the ordinance drafting and part of the requirements for the ordinance were intended to do everything it could to, to address the impacts on neighbors. It clearly, there are limits to what we can do. But they had to have, they have to have an operation plan as part of a temporary shelter. They have to have availability of things like water and bathrooms and other things that are intended to address having less of an impact on their neighbors. But there's no way you can guarantee 100% compliance or solutions. It's doing the best with the tools we've got in terms of the legislation.
So, but one thing that we have is we do have a ban on camping on public property. That is banned. Absolutely 100% ban on camping on public property. What we're looking at is only in very specific situations. If you meet all these criteria, and if this passes for a limited time of six months, under all these rules and regulations, something can happen for homelessness. I just wanted to make that clear. That if there was, if there were to be another six-month SOS and another camp came across the street, absolutely no way would we allow that to continue because it does not meet the requirement for this ordinance. Do you have anything to add, Chief?
No, Madam Mayor. I think that summed it up quite nicely. I, you know, I can certainly understand the last two gentlemen that spoke. Those issues are real for them. And there is a segment of that population that are resistant to everything that we're trying to do. And we continue to try and work throughout those groups and, and help as many as we can. And I, I come back to, some of our pursuits are working. Our numbers are reducing, our calls for service are reducing. As Mr. Hoffman indicated, and many of you have said, there's, there's many layers to this issue. And there's no, there's no fix at all. You know, there's no one, 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 one Band-Aid to, to solve all these, these different layers of wounds. But I understand those, those situations are very real. And, and I apologize, Mr. Cologne. I'm sorry, he lives on a jurisdictional nightmare for the sheriff's office and the PD. But those are real issues for us. And when we start talking about taking legal action, possibly using force, we need to be sure we are where we need to be. So it's, it's very difficult for us. And again, I apologize for that. I wish it was more black and white so that we could resolve those issues for them.
And we now have Carrie Varner. Carrie Varner has left. Jeff Cyanas? Cyanas?
My name is Jeff Cyanas. I live in Cranberry Park. Appreciate allowing me the time. I just became aware of this this afternoon. And just hearing about it was enough to motivate me to come here and want to express my concerns. So a little background, the personal, family members, friends, acquaintances who have dealt and forever will deal with addiction, mental illness, and homelessness. So it's not something that's foreign to me. I'm greatly sympathetic to everything that you have talked about for the last couple hours, trying to educate us as to what the city is doing. Can't applaud you enough for the efforts of the council, the city, particularly the police department. I know the issues you struggle with. However, just by my proximity to where I live, I understand some of the things that come when we concentrate people in a particular area. And I'm very concerned about safety and well-being in the area, even where I live, which is a half a mile, I would think, from where we're talking about. All evening, you've talked about all the good things that the city is doing to try and prevent the problem. But you've spent zero time talking about really what this ordinance is proposing, the details of that, or the education of the people that are here. I think many are in the same boat I am. This is something that is new to them and they're concerned. So tell us what you're going to do. With that, I would like to suggest, maybe you take the time to talk to your constituents. I'm one of them. Let us know what's in mind and let us have a chance to comment about it. I don't understand the rush to go and approve this this quickly. Allow some time so you can think about it, deal with it, hear the opinions of the people here, and maybe hear some of the things they might have to offer. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and I think that you have a very valid point. We should probably go over the actual ordinance itself for the people to know. It is not a stall, it's an education piece. And that's not something extensive, but it's just, Tammy or Corey, which, or is it Patrick? Okay, Patrick, can you please just go over what this actual ordinance is for the benefit of the public?
Certainly. Madam Mayor, members of council, the ordinance that's before you this evening on second reading is an addition to the zoning code that would allow for the creation of temporary outdoor spaces and overnight shelters. In both cases, they would operate for a six-month period of time. They would have to be properly licensed. They would be, they would have to submit an operating plan that the city would evaluate. And then ultimately, they would face inspections through our police department to ensure that those, those standards that they proposed are being met. That's, that's the gist of what's being proposed here. And it's being done, I think as the city attorney pointed out, to prevent the city from potential legal repercussions because we do not currently allow outdoor camping in publicly-owned properties within the city limits currently. So this gets us around the fact that we have that prohibition. It creates these safe outdoor spaces. It gives them certain requirements that they have to comply with. There is a submittal checklist that they've got to give us as to what, what their operational plan is going to be and who their points of contact are. That's, that's in a nutshell, the gist of what this ordinance is doing.
Hopefully, do you all have access to the ordinance so you can read where it has talks about that there must be potable drinking water, waste receptacles, access to hand washing, shower facilities, laundry service, medical services, and restroom facilities? There's also plans for minimizing the impact on surrounding businesses and residences. Again, there was an impact before with the experimental one. We realized that there was an impact. So now if there, if this were to happen again, they have to have a plan to not impact businesses and residences. Proposed site, a proposed, proposed site with a population, description of staffing and training, anticipated providers, code of conduct, managing exterior appearance, appearance of the proposed site, including trash, litter, hazardous materials, and biohazards. A description of procedures used to manage intake of the homeless population and sex offender backgrounds. And a description of medical-related services that will be provided at the site and social services. Those are some of the things, just for your education purposes. That's probably what I should have done. I should have done at the very beginning before we did anything else, so sorry about that. But thank you, Patrick, and thank you for being here to answer questions as well. And now we'll move on to Nancy Cyanus.
Thank you for the time, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say that my husband and I, Jeff, we, we moved here a couple of years ago, bought a home on Cranberry Loop and we are in the county. We purchased a home here, I have a job here, work in the school system, but for 30 years I worked in a school back in Iowa, so we lived in Iowa for many, many years. In my capacity as a teacher there, I worked in special education, and so I worked very closely with many, many families that were homeless. We had many families in the community where I lived who lived in homeless shelters, they lived in hotels because they didn't have to have deposits, they didn't have to have, you know, phones and things, everything was provided. As an educator, I spent 30 years working with families and outside agencies as well as those students to make those, to create those students into being productive citizens. Okay? But I think what we're talking about with this, this tent family that we're going to have, this SOS tent family, is not so much that it's going to be for families. I think there are a lot of, you, you have a lot of community services here, but this hardcore group of homelessness is going, is going to be attracted here, I really believe that. I have worked hand in hand with these people in the school system and I really feel that those students and those families wanted help. I think there's an element that doesn't want help. And I'm afraid that we are going to becoming a Mecca for this when we have these licensings of these tents, tent families. So I just, I worry and I'm concerned with that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Melissa Heims.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Just as a follow-up to that, I'm curious because there has been this pilot for a year. If, if DeeDee has any information as to whether or not piloting this last year caused more individuals to move to our city or caused, I don't know, if she has data on who was actually in there, if they were Fremont County residents or what have you. Thank you.
So DeeDee, the question is, do you have any data that shows where these people came from, where they attracted from outside areas? And I'd probably take that even further to Las Cruces, New Mexico, which was a safe outdoor space that we studied, and if you know their experiences as well.
Madam Mayor, Marcy would be far better to ask, answer that question about Las Cruces, New Mexico. Go ahead.
So on Las Cruces, New Mexico, and it, again, started as a six-month experience they realized needed to be long-term. They found first and foremost, the most crucial was to have it actually enclosed in, in the gating or in the fencing. I think that that's a suggestion for property owners also that don't want anybody on their property is to maybe upgrade their fencing to keep people from coming over. I know. But they have seen that that provided the safety and security for those members on the site to feel safe. And to be able to move forward with making progress in their own lives and to be able to get back on their feet again.
So I think the question is, was there an attraction, like?
No, absolutely not. And even in our year that we've been doing the, the Built for Zero, our numbers continue to decrease, not increase. So to me, if we were attracting people, we would have seen that almost 400 now, not a year or three years ago. I, I think we're seeing a, a constant decrease of the number on the streets as well as the number on our, in our camp even. You know, as you saw, we were able to house 19 of the 25. That's pretty extreme in a six-month period.
DeeDee, do you have any data?
I, I was just thinking about the, the 20-some individuals that have stayed at the camp, and I am not aware of anyone that came from outside of our county. They were all part of our community already when they moved in or stayed there.
Thank you. Time is now turned over to Melissa Heims.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. And you'll, you'll have to forgive us if we're cynical. We've been dealing with this for years and it's not getting better on our half. It may be getting better on DeeDee's, but it's not getting better where we are. And I'm going to read off some bullet points because I know I only have three minutes and we'll give the, we can, you can answer the questions on your time. My question is, where's the tent city going to be located? I'm guessing it's going to be located on the little finger that the city owns that's surrounded by county property. And why don't you put it in the middle of the city? Why do you constantly put it out where we are, where we are constantly being inundated with problems and issues with the homeless? You want to keep it hidden on the east side of town where the bulk of the people and the tourists don't see it, and that affects us. Of the 70% of the people that are from our community that are homeless, how many moved here homeless? That's a question I'd like to have answered. Have they been here a whole year homeless and that all of a sudden makes them our citizens that we need to take care of? None of us here object to taking care of our homeless and doing what we can when they fall on hard times and they have things beyond their control that they want to crawl out of that hole. And we fully support that, but we do not support taking care of other people's homeless. Let them take care of them. What are you doing for the taxpaying citizens of Fremont County? And I know you say, if you live in the county, well, you know, we can send you to county entities, but it's you, the city, that are creating these problems that are affecting the county, yet you want to just pass us off on the county. You have yet to reach out to the sheriff's department and the impact that this tent city might have because they're a fence away from the city that's where this is going to be located. And I suggest that you bring the county into this because you're going to impact them as well. Okay. Homelessness does not end. Pardon me?
That's not for you, that was for the audience.
Homelessness does not end at the city line. Okay? It falls over into the county because you've got a finger of the city right in the middle of the county. The more we provide, the more will come. Now you say they're 100 down, well, yeah, you built the Journey Home. How many of those homeless people went into the Journey Home? And so that automatically took people away from your, from your numbers.
These numbers are post-Journey Home.
I, I quickly want to go on. Okay? Treat us the way you want to be treated. You mentioned that, but you treat the homeless better than you pay the tax, treat the taxpaying citizens. You don't discuss things with them, you don't bring people into this, you don't communicate as we found when, when people reached out. We are surrounded by the city, but you want to disregard our concerns. The city has created the problem in our area with a finger of the city, I mentioned this, okay? But you want to pass us off. Please, consider the county as important.
DeeDee, can you give a, just a overlay of who was consulted, who was involved in this? Did you talk to sheriff's department? And as I mentioned earlier, we are talking to the county. We, we've actually had several joint meetings with the county over the years and we're having another one yet again.
Yes. Department of Human Services, which as we all know is a county entity, they were very much involved with the work that we were doing at the, the safe outdoor space. We, I can't say that I personally talked with the sheriff. I talked with the, there's a, there's an officer that works for Department of Human Services, his name is, I just know his first name, sorry, Tracy.
Swindler.
Swindler, Sheriff Swindler. He and I have had lots of conversations about the SOS and I'm assuming that he also talked with the, the sheriff's department about our concerns. The, we had a task force that consisted of all kinds of different agencies, concerned citizens were part of it, to the Colon family. I did not reach out to the Colon family and invite them to the task force, not intentionally. I, I'm sorry, I just didn't reach out. There you go, sorry.
I think, I think we'll move on.
I live at 3205 Grandview, down off of, just near Loews and Fishes on Four Mile Creek and DHS and, you know, I've lived here since 1973 and we've seen some good things and some bad things. And the things that are happening right now that the city is imposing on us due to that finger is, is not good. We've been impacted tremendously and I won't go into great detail, I'm trying to paraphrase my, my presentation to you because it's already been covered, but theft, bailing vodka bottles, picking up needles and trash and human waste. I'm going to tell you about one time that my wife called me, about one o'clock in the morning when I was at work. SO and CSPD wanted to search our barns with a canine, they were looking for a bad guy. Long story short, they found the guy naked swinging a machete on Four Mile Creek, law enforcement tased the guy, arrested him. His camp was right on our fence line. He had, he had undone the fence on our property, so he was on our property and the county. Very dangerous stuff. And I guess that's what we're talking about is everybody wants to be able to help the homeless. I mean, I, my religious values weigh heavily into this when I'm thinking about the homeless problem. And, and I don't think there's anybody here that wouldn't help somebody that, that needed help and the things that these folks are doing are fantastic and it looks like the numbers are going down from there. But I'm really concerned about the safety of my family, being on, in, in, the folks that you kick out of these places because they're non-compliant, some of them are very dangerous, right? I want to share something else from you and I know there were several comments, Ms. DeeDee, we've talked quite a bit and you have a big heart and that's, doesn't go not being seen. But there were several comments made in the meeting last, on the 18th, where the homeless people were coming, where are the homeless people coming from? Okay? I'm a retired Colorado Springs lieutenant with the fire department and I worked a lot with the population, just like one of the other speakers. And, I mean, on 29th and downtown, it's, it's pretty bad. And the things that we're talking about didn't work there because there's always a homeless camp outside of the one that you have, that you're able to, to control. And that's my worry, is having those in my backyard. There's been, you know, I've witnessed stabbings, rapes and everything in between. I had two individuals, I want to share this about the two individuals that I recognized that were-
I'm really sorry, but it is-
Two individuals, I mean-
I just want to be fair to every single person-
Well, it wasn't fair the first time, the lady gave her five minutes, so just let me finish one comment here. I recognized two individuals, we called them frequent flyers because we'd seen them a lot in Colorado Springs. And all of a sudden, they show up, they're putting beer in one of the concrete basins to cool it. And I asked them, I said, "What are you guys doing down this far south?" They said to me, "Services are easier down here and we don't have to wait in the line." And I know there's a big exchange of people coming back and forth all the time from Colorado Springs, I seen some of the people up there again. So they come down here quite a bit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Manny Cullen, I'm a third-generation farmer here in Fremont County. I live in the county, I do border your eastern property line and I have a finger of the highway, the banded highway on Highway 50 that runs into Four Mile Creek. And I farm that property south of that and I farm all the property west, most of the property west of there, whether for myself or others. I suppose the best, a lot of stuff has been said, but I should tell you on the trespassing issue, I have lost fenders off of trailers, I've lost wheels off of the trailers, I have reported them to the police department and to the sheriff's department. I can go get the records for you. Nothing has been done with any of that. Of course, I've found numerous people trespassing on my property. They have been ushered off either by myself or my family or by SO office or in some cases by the police department. We've had numerous fires in Four Mile Creek. I have property boarding in Four Mile Creek and Metgolch, we've had fires in both of them. And those fires are very dangerous and there is going to be property lost with them. I, the bridge on Grandview Avenue is immediately next to my, one of my buildings that have hay stored in them. We've had fires called underneath there several times, I've called the fire department. Yes, they might put it out, but the next day, we got a fire and there was smoke coming out from underneath the bridge. I've seen that on Highway 50's bridge and so the fires are always there, especially in the winter time when it's cold. And I know it's going to continue. You talk about theft, they can't do anything about it. Do you know how many shopping carts I pull out of the ditch, out of the creeks? Shopping carts going down the street, you see them on the north side of Highway 50, west of Four Mile Creek and east of Four Mile Creek. Now, they're just stealing. And when they steal, who's going to pay for it? Our food source is, let's say, whatever you want to call it, they got to go buy food at Safeway or City Market, those carts are all over it. So what do they do? They raise their price in order to take care of their theft. And that really bothers me because then I have to pay more for food. Now, I am a farmer and I raise food. I had an apple orchard there, yes. What do they do? They cut the fence and come in to get apples or any fruit, vegetable that you want to do. And do I have to play, take care of that? Yes, I do. And I haven't gone to force yet, but you guys are pushing me to go to the force. I don't like, how, how would you, why would you want to kill somebody overtaking a piece of vegetable? A squash? That, that's ridiculous. I, I, I just can't understand it. Now, you all want solutions, you say. You can't come up here and bitch and complain without solution and giving you more tools? I will give you a tool. Coeur d'Alene, Idaho wanted to stop panhandling. Main reason is, if you give your money to a charity, a nonprofit charitable, it's going to supposedly the right place, like what you're doing. And I commend you for what you're doing. So that money goes to the proper place. But if you panhandle, that money given to that homeless person goes for alcohol, drugs or whatever they, cigarettes, whatever they want to do. So Coeur d'Alene, Idaho comes along and says, "All right, if you're, our ordinance is, if you roll down your window and pass money out your window, we don't know if it's a drug dealer or what's going on, so we're going to arrest you and we're going to give you a ticket, a citation for $250 for handing five quarters out the window." And that stopped, that really helped, helped Idaho.
Thank you, Manny, for the solution. I'm afraid it'd be our time-
I would say I got hundreds of more things on here.
Well, you have, please give us, please give us all. And we, Manny, you and I, we, we all can sit down and have more conversations always. And I appreciate your solutions.
I would love to. Well, I would like to ask one thing. Give us time to pull together our facts and put them up there. Please table this tonight so that we have our opportunity. A lot of these people didn't even know what was going on and I hate to tell you this, if we pull our information together, we might be able to help. Now, I did serve 30 years in mental health and I, one of my questions is, how many of these people, the 194 that are left, children and adults have a mental health issue? And that mental health issue, you know our state's in a lot of trouble over our mental health system. And we could do stuff like, if you want to go to Denver and look at our governor, he wants to put them out in Watkins in a mental health facility that was out there before and we had to close it down because of abuse to the populace in there. And he wants $50 million out of our state budget in order to support that facility. We don't want to go there. We don't want to-
So we are going to need to have a lot more conversations about more solutions because as we've mentioned, this is complex and we're going to need probably gazillion solutions to even begin to go through this. So keep your solutions there, we'll have more conversations, absolutely 100%. Nick?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Manny. Nick? Dr. Terry Moll? Dr. Terry? Ashley Sheperley? Ashley Shepherd Lee?
Hello, I am on one of the weird properties that are right there on the county line. My mailbox is in the city, so I'd like to think I count. So, uh, as everyone knows, we already have issues with homeless, um, in our area. We have caught people on our property cooking meth, uh, shooting up, building fires, all over our properties, destroying the irrigation for our entire neighborhood. We find homeless in our barns, sheds, animal trailers and at the creeks that run through our properties. One of our neighbors even had a homeless man drive his truck right through his fence and camp on his property. We have called the cops many times to remove the homeless off our property and we have to give them eviction times. The homeless, of course, never follow through and they were never removed. I feel this camp is just gonna invite even more people to the neighborhood. I don't understand why we're not spreading out the housing throughout Canyon City, I don't like it's just by us, right here on the county line. We're pulling them from town because they're causing problems there, but then just bringing it to us. By allowing this site, I feel it will destroy my family's and our community's way of life. We not only live on our property, but we do have the local educational petting zoo. Our community used to be one of the safer neighborhoods in Canyon City, but that's coming to an end. We have recently found over fifty needles in our irrigation ditch that flows onto our land where we grow food and I allow my children to play. Could you imagine if you found that in your own yard? I no longer feel safe allowing my children out to play alone on my property and I already don't allow my children out to feed the animals at night, they have to feed during the daylight. This tent community will keep the homeless, um, in our neighborhood. We will have to padlock everything down, families and schools won't feel safe being at our home, our farm equipment won't be safe in our fields and what about my animals? Who will keep the homeless off our properties and out of our animal enclosures? We're farmers, we can't afford to put up fencing. We also don't want it to look like a prison. What was once a safe generational family farm community will be a dangerous place to be. These farms take care of our environment, produce healthy foods for our community, hay for the animals and we are all a huge part of Canyon City's community. But these family farms are disappearing all across the United States, but we are lucky as a community to have as many farms as we do that are still producing right here in Canyon City. I support what our community is doing to help the homeless in Canyon City, but I do not support the location. Nobody here would not want this next to their home. Correct me if I'm wrong, but if our water continues to be contaminated, is anyone responsible? If homeless are camping on my creek, will they be removed? So now we, will we be able to continue to farm? We talk about a safe outdoor place for the homeless, but what about our neighborhood? How will Canyon City preserve our community? Who will protect our water and our lands?
Thank you Ashley. Please, please show respect for the process. Tracy Walsworth.
Hi, I am going to speak to you from a landlord's point of view. I've worked with Solvista, I have worked with Loews and Fishes. Six of the last people that were sent to me from Loews and Fishes could not pass a background check. One was a child molester, one was a sexual predator, two were felons and one was smart enough to use a different name and change the way he did things to pass the background check. Then I ended up having to take him to court, which took forever and ended up owing me seven thousand five hundred. And by the way, he's the one who said he had the stroke and the heart attack, I'm sorry, I'm so emotional, but this is just ruining our city and if you bring this tent city in, it's just going to get worse and worse. The guy who said he had the heart attack and the stroke not only had a felony here in Canyon City, he had them all over the state. He didn't have a heart attack, it was just his way of playing the game. And then I have homeless people constantly coming to my apartment complexes and I constantly have to run them off because my tenants do not feel safe. My job is not to help the homeless people constantly, which I do. Out of the six people I ran the background check on, I did rent to one of the homeless men. He didn't have anything on his background, he has turned out to be a great tenant. The other five were not from Fremont County and this was just in the last six months, so do not tell me that all the people coming in here are from Fremont County, 'cause that is not true. I think their numbers and all their data is not true. I mean, I deal with it every single day, I have five apartment complexes in town. They leave their trash, they leave their garbage, they leave their soiled underwear, they throw everything, not including needles in my dumpsters and everything else. So... You say to have a solution? Do background checks. Loews and Fishes never does background checks when they send me people, ever. Solvista does not do background checks. And if you're relying on Loews and Fishes and Solvista to solve this problem, they are dropping the ball. I have called literally Solvista's emergency hotline at least six times, never got an answer and this is for people who I have rented to for them and they don't even show up for their own people who they're already managing, so don't tell me they're gonna manage all the homeless people too. They can't even manage the people that have homes right now. I did have to evict one person because she flooded the person's home below her and I had to evict another person because Solvista kept letting him run out of medication and he would run out into the streets screaming and yelling, bothering the other tenants, bothering the neighbors and I would get constant complaints.
Thank you, I appreciate your comments. Tammy Braun? Tammy Braun? Peg Blackwell?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I, um, I'm learning so much tonight from all of you and I know it touches all of our hearts because we want this issue to get resolved. And you can't do it and we can't do it and you can't do it, we have to all do it. So we have to figure out a way, we're all going to come together to hear each other and hear all the things that people just heard about today and figure out what we're going to do. I am a, a member of the Fremont County Homeless Coalition and I do street outreach with, for, with Fremont County and I do street outreach with the Methodist Church and have done it for many years and I have seen the lives changed of so many people. I have seen, I've seen the SOS site full of people and I've seen people go into homes. We had a married couple there who's now part of our street outreach, who all of them know and trust and we are making such headway because they know them already. I'm not gonna talk about any other things that have been mentioned tonight, but the bottom line is we all need to get together and figure out how we are going to make this work and how we are gonna solve this issue. Homelessness isn't gonna go away, we're always gonna have homeless people, but how are we gonna keep us safe? We've had stuff at the church, we've, you know, we've witnessed it, we've had people with machetes, you know, at the back door sleeping. We've been there, I get it, maybe not to the extent that everybody else does. I have a friend here tonight who had a homeless person just appear in his house out of nowhere and they were able to deal with it, but how unsafe is that? So what are we gonna do and how are we gonna do it? I know that the facility, the SOS site here did make a difference with a lot of people and they were people that were already here, so I'm just an advocate for all of us to be in a place that's safe and to take care of the people that are our people that are homeless and if, if they're from another place, how do we get them housed? And that, that's what our job is, to get them out of backyards, get them off our properties so that they're not in our trailers and then they're not in our backyard, but they have a place to go that they can feel safe also because they are so afraid of somebody stabbing them in the middle of the night when they are people that just are down on their luck. And so I've seen both sides and I just, you know, I'm gonna pray for all of us to be at a place where we can come together and come up with some solutions together to move forward with the steps that we need to do that. Thank you.
Thank you Peggy. We now have Tim Walsworth.
I'm Tracy's husband. We also just learned about this meeting about two-thirty today, so we really had very little time to prepare. I firmly believe that you're not gonna end homeless, homelessness in our community by creating a more inviting environment with a SOS tent-type city in our city, but I, I just, I can't wrap my head around that. Like, like my wife said, we have, um, we're, we're fully invested here in real estate and we provide, um, housing and we try to provide safe, clean, affordable housing to the community and we do a good job of that. But you've just heard my wife's struggles with some of the, some of the things with background checks that we've worked with, with the homeless population that is coming in. You take a drive up to Colorado Springs on the south end of town at Nevada and I-25, I go up there quite a bit on business and you will see what happens to a community in a negative light with all the homeless. It's filthy, it's disgusting, you've got panhandlers essentially begging on the streets and pestering everybody that drives by. That's what I think you're inviting here because it sounds like when we have a tent city here and you might have an encasement for it with fencing, but where do they go when they're done? Or where do they go during the day? They come into the community, they come into our city. It is, it, it's not a good situation for families, it's not a good situation for anybody that lives here if they wanna feel safe. When good people don't feel safe in their community, they'll move on if they are capable of doing that. Anybody who's watched the news for the last year and a half has seen people outmigrating from these cities that have had these terrible drug-infested homeless encampments all over and you can see where they're moving to. Maybe a suggestion might be that instead of just going and looking at, let's find the models for a tent city somewhere, maybe our city, the council members and the mayor and the Loews and Fishes people, maybe they should go to the communities that aren't experiencing quite the homeless situation, that have found ways to improve it. I would really ask all of our elected officials to look for ways to create an environment, an inviting environment for those who wanna contribute to our community. We need contributors to our community and not just an environment for increasing the homeless population here in Canyon City and Fremont County. That's all I got.
Todd Luce? Oh, that was Doug Cohen. Oh, go ahead, come on up Todd, I'm sorry. I'm losing track of my, my pile here.
Uh, hello, first of all, I want to, uh, say that if I called the police every time we dealt with somebody, we would have, uh, you'd double your calls on your homeless thing. I am the senior minister of Grandview Christian Church, the very end of your finger in, in this area and, uh, first of all, I wanna thank the police department for all their continued service and they help us every time we've called them and need them on our property. Uh, it may seem strange that a church member or the church minister would be opposing a homeless camp because we're in the business of helping people and we've helped quite the many with homelessness in our area. Uh, we've been dealing with homeless trespassing on our property for many years. Due to liability and safety issues, we do not allow anyone to loiter or camp overnight on our property. Most recently, as in March, we helped the ditch company, one of the gentlemen who left because he didn't wanna hang, hang around, clean up three dump truck loads of trash, shopping carts, leftover items in the area between the apartments in our, our area. We spent thousands of dollars paying for cleanup, we had, which is hazardous 'cause of the needles, broken beer bottles, drug paraphernalia that we found on our property. When a child brings me a needle when we're playing in the grass, that's an issue and we've cleaned up the items after all these times and we always ask them, we give them time, "Please move your stuff, please get it out, if they don't, then we call the police, whatever," but most of the time, never a problem. But after one recent one, uh, we removed the items because nobody showed up, whatever, we moved them and then we were threatened, my staff was threatened and even I was threatened with my life. We had to form a security team and that's who patrols our property on a regular basis now, we installed video cameras, security systems, increased our lighting around the building and property just for during the week. We're not trying to stereotype homeless person, but these are just the facts that we've dealt with over the years. Most of people we've dealt with have had criminal records, we've offered to help them, find a job, even this Sunday, even yesterday, a guy laying in front of our, our doors and I, I offered him a breakfast burrito and a cup of coffee, told him, "Man, you can't be here, you can't be like this." And alls he did was start cussing and leaving, left his stuff, I said, "You gonna pick this stuff up?" He said, "Nope," I said, "I'm putting it in the trash." He said, "Okay, fine." But if I called you guys every time we dealt with that, you would have double the calls, not a problem, 'cause that's how much we deal with it. It's been an issue, all this has been an issue in a time when a city ordinance says there's no camping on city limits or city property and we're in that. We are also the main transfer for all my county friends that are here, they all walk through my parking lot and for, I know, I realize a church might seem like it's the, the place that is public property 'cause it's a church, but it's not, it's private property and we do our best to help people, but we are threatened, we are, uh, in danger, we're trying to make an area for our kids. Uh, the question I have for this as I wrap things up is, who is liable for the, the property damage, the health issues, the increased crime that's inevitably gonna happen when you increase that happening up there, uh, with people that have no responsibility or no ties to our community? I just want, I pray for you guys regularly, I want to prayerfully ask you to think about the ramifications of what you're doing for our neighborhood where we live.
Thank you. Doug Cohen, you're next. Please respect the process.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, thank you for serving. We've been asking to respect the process, uh, I think the process needs to be changed. These folks here that spoke in favor of all this tonight, they got all the time they wanted, they were even asked to repeat and yet we're held to three minutes. Maybe we have more to say. Okay? Now, the gentleman that just spoke before me, uh, we were part of that cleanup as a ditch company. I had been to Loews and Fishes, I had been to the police department and I'd also been to the sheriff's department. I had a response from the police department, or from the sheriff's department, no response from the police department and I got absolutely no satisfaction from Loews and Fishes or any of their staff. So I would say the system is not working. And I would not only echo Manny Cullen's suggestion to table this, I would say, "Give it up." Thank you.
We now have Kay Hensaker.
Good evening, I really don't have a whole lot to contribute, other than, um, a gal I work with showed me her phone with a man on her ring with a machete walking up and down in front of her house. She goes, "Kay, what, I guess we're calling the police because what are we supposed to do? This man has a machete in front of my house." The police came and they did find that machete, he had thrown it in the bushes somewhere and they, they took him away. I also saw a man on fifty right by, uh, the, what is it, La Petite Chablis with a, a, a big guitar and he's smashing it on the ground, right there in front of everybody, smashing, smashing. I don't feel safe in our city. I stayed till ten o'clock working at my office, uh, our office, um, just last, just, just a few days ago and I ended up calling the sheriff's dep, or the, the police department and they were kind enough to send an officer, I just was parked right outside my door, but I did not feel safe. And the officer said to me, "It was really good you called, I don't blame you." He held the light for me so I could lock up my office, he walked me to my car, which was right at the end of the sidewalk, he helped me get into my car and he goes, "Anytime you stay late, be, feel free to call us, 'cause you're right, it's not safe."
We now have Martin Welch. We now have Martin Welch. Martin Welch. Jerry Bouchard.
Well, thank you for letting me speak. It's the first speech in 79 years. So, uh, you know, it breaks your heart every time you see a homeless person, especially a child. Our property runs north right up to Loaves and Fishes. Ninety-nine percent of those people are just, you know, had bad luck. But the other 1% are climbing up our fences, getting in our yard, afraid to go on vacation in the wintertime because the people will think what you got there. So it's, uh, it's a sad thing that, you know, that just happens, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you. Timmy Pearson. Timmy? All right. I notice there's another one coming. If anyone else wishes to address council, you're still welcome to fill out a form to turn in.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to let me express myself to you. I want to preface this with letting you know that I do hold mental health and substance abuse credentials. I live in the county, but that doesn't mean that I am not passionate about the city I live in, Canyon City. I'd like to just commend everybody here for all of the work that you've obviously done, the countless hours you put in. So I just want to thank you for that. I have some other questions, though. I come from a background of working with people from every walk of life, incarcerated, people who've been out on parole, et cetera. So I, I've really dealt with every level of humanity. I have compassion for the homeless. I have compassion for our community. So let me begin. I would like to know how many of you on the City Council have been out individually in our community talking to its members to ask them really the impact of what their perception is of homelessness. I'd like to further ask you if you have been around to the small business organizations or even the big business organizations to ask them what the impact of homelessness has had upon them. I'd like to thank Councilmember Hemmerich for taking my phone call this afternoon so that I could better understand the issues and not step up here and have, open my mouth and have my brain fall out. So with that said, I'm asking you to please define for me and for the community what you are asking out of the homeless in return for all the countless services that you are providing them. I believe we have engaged in what is called a codependent or enabling relationship. I have yet to hear in a very strong defining way that we're even looking at offering them employment in this community or even expecting it out of them. I have a solution for that because, you see, I have spent the time in the community, I am invested. I have been around talking to businesspeople in this community, I have been talking to my peers in this community. I've stopped a homeless person from taking my neighbor's fence apart, he needed the wood. Oh, really? So listen, I've talked to these countless employers and we're willing to come together in this community for a solution for holding a job fair for the homeless as well as other people in this community who are in the same position that some of these homeless people are in, barely able to put a roof over their head and needing employment. I'm bringing that resource to you. I'm telling you that my organization, Wings of Hope, will bring that, I will lay it down. And I will bring these employers to you so that we can put on a job there for the homeless or for the people in this community who need employment. I'm not an expert or know where these homeless people live. I have no idea where they are. You have Loaves and Fishes and the other people of this coalition know where these homeless people are, know how to reach out to them. I'm expecting you to come to the table and use that resource for me in order to get our job there underway. I think that's reprimacosity in the sense of expecting the homeless also to give back to this community instead of taking and taking and taking and robbing and, and all those kinds of things. So I'm not going to take up any more of your time. I'd be willing to discuss this with you all after. If I don't hear anything from you all, then I know where it's at. It's not there.
We have your contact information and we, obviously, as we said several times, this is a huge problem. We need lots more solutions. Thank you for coming for a solution.
Well, and I hope you'll table this so we can come up with something. Thank you.
Marcy, do you have a response?
Something that I wanted to make sure to clarify is first and foremost, when we do these housing vouchers, it doesn't mean that we are taking housing out of our community necessarily. Our vouchers work throughout the state of Colorado and we are able to help people get placed wherever their family support systems are located because we do know that you need that support to be successful. I also want to make sure that it's understood that when we're talking about a temporary campsite, first off, the end of the road has been deemed not worthy and will not be used any further as a campsite, correct? That was what was discussed last month, that that is a public roadway and it would not be used. This has been something that's, this is our second reading. So I wanted to, you know, bring up that there's, we're talking about a possibility of seven to eight shelters. We're not talking about cramming 100 tents in an acre. We're talking about eight shelters that would allow a tent to sustain the winds that we have and the snow that we have in these months of cold weather. So we're talking a three-sided structure that allows them to place their tent inside that to be blocked from the wind. We're not asking for a free-for-all.
Lisa Pascoe.
Hi, and thank you for giving me the time to speak. I'd like to thank you to the Police Department and the Sheriff's Department and all the first responders that helped. I would like to say that I agree with many of the people here about tabling this issue because there's not enough evidence on our side. I don't live in the county, I live in the city. Where I live, the homeless population gets a ride from their friends, they come up in my neck of the woods, they steal bicycles, they get drunk on the side of the roads. We find needles up and down Fifth Street, there's trash. I grew up in this town, it was never this dirty and it's disgusting. I hate even walking my grandkids to the park because of all the trash that's here. And I'm not talking people, I'm talking the, the garbage that gets left. It's disgusting. My son went for a, a bike ride with his kids, brought his bike inside our fence, came in to get a glass of water and within 10 minutes it was stolen out of our yard and we have a fence. The fact that my car has been broken into numerous times is beyond reproach. I understand the county, I get it, but it's not just the county that's being terrorized. It's also the people that live inside the city. I know that you want a solution. Table this and give us the time to come up with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis Weed.
Yeah, Dennis Weed, thanks for the opportunity. I'll be real brief and I just want to talk about something that apparently nobody's talked about. What happens after six months? You've got these encampments or whatever you want to call them and then six months are up. Then what? And does anybody really believe for a moment that they're just going to shut down or the problem's going to be solved? I think the ordinance as written is fatally flawed. I think Doug Cohen had the right answer, it should be scrapped. But at the very least, you need to table it and figure it out. That's all I got.
Thank you. Will Collin.
Thank you again. I just wanted to talk about the comments that you made. It's only seven or eight more units. How many times has this community heard that? It's just Journey Homes, it's just 32 units, it's just an add-on to Loaves and Fishes, it's just a few units. It's always just a few more units. There's got to be a line drawn somewhere. And I think tonight, the community's spoken, you need to, I, Doug, I agree with Doug, scrap it. This is not what we want here. City Council, we're the ones that vote here. I know you guys don't get paid near enough for the amount of time that you guys spend up there, but we're the ones that vote. I'm pretty sure the homeless don't vote. I think you guys should remember that. We're your constituents, they're not. By the way, the 70% from Fremont County, I have kicked more people off my property than anybody in this room, including the Police Department. And I talked to each and every one of them, 70%, no way, we're not even close. Maybe 5%, maybe. And I have kicked off literally hundreds of people in the last 10 years. I've probably kicked off hundreds of people in the last three years because I do it every week. I have to because if I don't, they will trash my family's property. Trash it. Thank you for my, or thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you to each and every one of you for being a part of the process and for having your voice heard. And I'd like to turn the time over to council if there's anything that you would like to say pertaining to this ordinance. Councilmember Dennehy.
Yeah, I want to thank you all for coming. This is a very hard subject. I even heard a street brought up in, in somebody's speaking today and that was my street. I live on a street that doesn't have any other public property on it. I live on one of the few dirt roads in Canyon City within city limits. I've had objects, my son's bike was stolen. We had a very big wagon that we had, we had propane stuff for our pizza business, we had a lot of stuff stolen. Was it homeless? Don't know. Do I see homeless up in Lincoln Park area? Yes. But was it homeless? I don't know. At the time when it was stolen? You bet, that's what I said. Dang homeless. Was I right? Could have been. This is a tough subject, guys. And, and I know a lot of you, I know a ton of you who've spoke tonight. I've been on your property, you know, I know that area very well down there. I know a lot of people down there. This is a tough subject. Is it going to go away? No. Is there anything we can do to help it? I have my thoughts on that. Do I think? I don't know, I'd like to think that there's something that we could do. But is there? Is it going to get worse? As job creations, as, you know, I don't mean the smart, as we integrate more into a non-personal society, in other words, you go to Walmart, you don't have checkers or people checking you out anymore, you check yourself out. There's jobs lost right there. And as this continues, and everybody's doing it, how many people buy on Amazon? You know, we're shrinking our own economies, which therefore makes people come out of work. And it just, it's a revolving process. Is there a solution? I don't know. I would like to say I knew one, but I don't. But it's something we can all work on. I agree with, you know, I've listened to Will tonight, you know, this is a problem that is not going to be an easy one to say, boom, we got it, let's fix it. It can't be done that way. I do agree that we have to work together. I hate to see, I know that what happened to your property, you and I talked years ago about this, back when I was cooking pizzas down by the Justice Center. Now, I mean, the smart, I had a lot of homeless come up to me. A few would come up and say, can I just have a piece? No. Then I'd have those few that would come up and you could sense it and, I'll get your pizza. No, 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 we want to buy it. Okay. It's a tough call. You don't know what each person's going to be. And each person is an individual. And, you know, do I have anything else to really say on this? This is a tough subject, guys. And I feel for everybody whose land has been stuff stolen. I've had stuff stolen. But again, who was it? I know, I know in your case, Will, in the Collins' property and some of the other people down there on the four-mile area, I know that it's homeless down there. I, I know, I've seen the encampments, I've seen you guys' properties down there. In other parts of the city, we don't know. I'll be honest with you, we don't know. I don't know who did it on my property. I'd like to say I did. I don't know. It's a tough problem. I hope we can come up with a solution in our city. You know, it's just something that we all have, it's a, it's a bad problem. Is it going to get better? I don't think so. Our economy's probably going to go down a little bit more personally. I think it's a tough problem, guys.
Any other questions or comments from council on this ordinance?
Madam Mayor? If we decided to table this or delay it or talk some more about it, we would need, we would need to have more input from the community, more positive ideas or solutions. Is that something that we could do?
Council can do whatever is their wish by vote, by emotion. Councilmember Tracy.
I too want to thank everyone for being here and those who've already left for whatever reason. It, it's helpful to hear from the community, whether you live within city limits or not. I, I would encourage those of you who don't live in the city limits to go speak to your governing body about your concerns if you haven't already. Because there's a lot that we can do, but we don't have jurisdiction over the unincorporated areas of the county. And I guess on the issue of whether to table or not, I, I hesitate to table it because I don't know what we'll gain by that. If we're talking about having another specific meeting where people come back with some other suggestions, that'd be great. We certainly have gotten a lot of input tonight, but I, I'm just a little hesitant on that. And I do have to say too, and I think we all know this, but, you know, people, regardless of their circumstances, any of us, anyone else, have the right to move from community to community.
Yeah, okay.
No.
We're talking about,
Please don't misunderstand me.
We're talking about, please, please show respect in these chambers during this process.
I'm sorry if you misunderstood my statement. What I'm saying is people who come here and don't have a home, they do have the right to come here. There's no law against people coming here. And I, frankly, I've been, I've had a home here since the 70s, longer than perhaps some of you. I don't know that I felt welcome when I came in the late 70s, but I solved that by running for City Council a few years later and serving eight years back in the 80s on City Council and now here I am back. So I don't want you to misunderstand me. I'm not talking about any of you. I'm saying that any person has the right to go from community to community. And so we're not going to have a law or an ordinance that stops that. What we want to do as a community with all of your help is figure out how to best deal with people who have social problems. If it's problems following the law, there's ways to deal with that. If they're experiencing homeless, homelessness, then we need to deal with that in the best ways we know how. So continue to give us feedback on how to do that. The problem is not going to go away. It exists everywhere, in the smallest towns in Colorado, in the biggest cities and in every other state. It is a growing problem. It is a growing problem because of the societal conditions that we all live in. That's all.
Councilmember Smith.
I just have a question for Cory. If we were to table this, how, how long will we need to take to bring it back?
That's up to Council, in terms of how long to table it. There, there is one thing I want to clarify, though. This ordinance does not allow this on any particular property. A lot of the discussion has been about one particular property. This authorizes this use with approval through a, through a planning process, but it is not tied to any particular property at all.
So let's take that a little bit further, that this, if this were to pass, if there was going to be another safe outdoor space, it would have to become before Council with a planning process to meet all these criteria, plus more that we had talked about in the last meeting. A require, of an administrative requirement for fencing and supervision, and a multiplicity of other things, which those requirements don't necessarily make it a spot on that, where, where it was this last time. Like this last time, we decided that is not the ideal spot.
The limitation on outdoor, the temporary shelter, safe outdoor spaces, it has to be on property that's zoned, either general, commercial, or industrial. So, so those are the criteria for someone to apply.
The current experimental safe outdoor space, this, reiterate that that was experimental. Can this work? Does it work? Is there value in it? What could be done better? This is still part of that, that conversation. And we have a lot more to say for that. But as it is now, that, that safe outdoor space is closed. It has been shut down for the season. It was temporary.
Councilmember Dennehy.
I'm wondering if we can, to get an answer for this, because it's a question that came up earlier and, and it's something that I would like to kind of know an answer to as well. After the six months? That was a great question. And I, I think Dennis, I think might have mentioned that, but after six months, and this, you know, is this carried on? Is this something that we say is the city we want to do more of? Or is it a six-month trial done? And then, and again, what happens?
Well, I mean, of course, we have communities such as Vale, who did go into it as a six-month temporary. In that six-month time, they were able to complete their winter shelter. And at that time, they were able to move all the people from their safe outdoor space into the shelter, and that effectively closed that shelter. And it will not be reopened, since they do now have the bedding to accommodate the homeless that they have during those cold weather months. There is legislation that comes down that stipulates how much bedding has to be available per population. And, you know, we can scramble as fast as we can. We're never going to, you know, be able to meet that. But I think what this does is allows options for those people who do find themselves in a position that they've never been in before, and they don't have that place to turn to. And, you know, at present, we are restructuring and remodeling Loews and Fishes, and hoping to be able to accommodate now thirty-eight people, which is amazing, compared to where we were with seventeen. So we've more than doubled. But that's still, we still have a hundred and forty-nine people presently homeless. And, you know, as you mentioned, twenty of those, or twenty families are amongst those numbers. And, you know, again, this is just one possible step. Some of these people that are being identified, we may even have emergency housing available for that family. And they can move in even faster. But it's being able to identify them and find them, to be able to get that option to them while the availability is there. Because if, you know, we have two weeks to locate someone, and then that voucher's gone, whether they were staying here with that voucher, or going to another community, they've lost that opportunity. And now we start another two-week process of trying to locate the next person. And so forth and so on, until we can find someone that is able to, to use that voucher.
I, I just want to follow up on something you said there. That, I can't remember how you said it was mandated, that there has to be a percentage. Do you know what our percentage of, of?
Availability.
Availability, just roughly? No? Okay.
No, sorry.
Maybe, maybe.
I can look that up for you.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'll find out. I'm good at that research.
Thank you. No, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Um, Cory?
Just, just one thing on the, the temporary nature of this, and it's, the temporary fixes that relates to homeless, I can't speak to. But the reason it's temporary is from a land use perspective, because this is not ever intended to be a permanent use on the property. It is intended to be an interim land use, use. And so whether or not, you know, to Councilmember Dennehy's question, whether, from a treatment perspective, six months is enough, no, whatever the term, timeframe is, that's not why the six months is there. The six months is there solely because it's a land use, requirement saying it can't be longer than six months because of the impact on neighbors, impact on the community. It's intended only to be temporary, not permanent. So it really doesn't have anything to do with the treatment methodology.
Mayor, yeah, Mayor Protim Hamrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, you know, this, this really is a difficult problem. But, but first, I do really want to thank each and every one of you that has, has come out. And whether you expressed an opinion or not, it, it is important, I know, to myself and, and to the rest of Council, that, that when, when there's a controversial subject, that we do hear from everybody. And, and thank you for coming. And I do, and I do appreciate what, what you said. Just remember, homelessness is not the cause of our problems. Homelessness is a symptom of the problems that we're facing. If you could wave a magic wand and home these people that are causing problems on private property, our problems wouldn't go away. We would still have the problems. The issue is that, that we have individuals, and this is not true of every homeless person, as a matter of fact, it's probably the, the ten percent. We have, we have individuals who have no respect for laws and authority, and no fear of consequences. And those people, you know, I would, I, I wish there was some way that we could bring the full weight of the law down upon them to, to, to help address this situation. But that's not the problem we're going to solve tonight. The problem that we are attempting to solve is the, is to, to build on what has been a success. It has been successful. If we've had fifteen out of twenty-six people find homes that were living in tents six months ago, that's, 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 that's pretty good. The, so, you know, the, how do we, how do we address the ten percent? We're, we're not going to address it tonight. The, that's, that's for us as individual voters, just as been suggested here tonight about, over this particular issue. But, but that's for us to address with, with our state government and our federal government. We do need to be able to bring back a healthy respect for the law, for people that are trespassing, that are causing damage, that are engaging in these behaviors, that, that are antisocial. And with that, thank you, Madam Mayor.
I just want to just take a moment to circle back, that this has been a, a problem for a long time. When I ran for office six and a half years ago, I would say it was top three. Top three issues, fixing streets, homelessness. We're definitely right up, right there, neck and neck. It's been a long process to get there. These last two and a half years, it has really gained a lot of momentum in finally getting the carrots and the sticks to address homelessness. And I, I really do need to just give a moment to say that that sixty percent reduction since two thousand nineteen, that did not magically happen. It, I witnessed, it took a lot of work, a lot of determination, a lot of persistence from many, many organizations and entities throughout Fremont County. The work is not done. It has gotten better. I would say in the beginning of my tenure as an elected office, I would probably get emails almost every single day with homelessness problems. And that has reduced drastically, probably in similar to the percentages that we've seen in the reduction of homelessness. And we've heard a lot of problems tonight. And they have been heard. We recognize we still have a lot that needs to be done. And it's going to take a lot more creativity, and a lot more persistence, and a lot more resilience to see it through. Because it's not going to magically be done. It's going to take those years of persistence and teamwork from every single entity and resource that we can find in Fremont County to come together and make that happen.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I won't speak for long, because I think I would be echoing what many of you have already said. This is a significant nuanced challenge that impacts all of us, regardless of whether we live in the city or in the county. And it really will take that unified, consolidated approach with, with all parties who are impacted, having a voice at the table. I agree with Mayor Protim Hamrick that, you know, if, over half of the people out of the temporary safe outdoor space were housed at the end of it, that that is a positive end result. But I think what we've heard this evening as well, is that there are a lot of lessons that, that can be learned from that pilot that may impact and may change how the ordinance needs to be drafted, to ensure that if it, if it does move forward, if Council does approve it, that, that those lessons learned from some of the neighbors of that safe outdoor space are also reflected and also included in the draft language. So I for one, I'm always in favor of, of everyone who has, has, everyone who, who will be impacted by government's decisions, having a voice and having a, a say in how they're drafted and how they're created. And I for one would be in favor of tabling it, so that we have that opportunity to have the larger meeting and have people who have been impacted by the pilot have a voice in, in what the future of it looks like. And be able to, to share those lessons learned in a, a much more concrete and open, open fashion. So I think that it's clear that, that there's a lot of discussion, and there's a lot of viewpoints around this, and that it's important that we have the opportunity to, to really hear in a more wholesome manner from everyone. I think that we did that with the UTB ordinance, and it yielded some pretty positive results with regard to people feeling like their voices were heard, and like they had a, a part in the process. This is obviously an even bigger and, and much more complicated challenge. But given that we do have a lot of information and a lot of data from, from the pilot last year, I, I think it makes sense to hear everyone's views. And, and I for one would be in favor of taking the time to make sure that we're crafting this in a way that makes the most sense. Thanks.
And as a part of the, um, looking to the future of where this ordinance may, may go, we'll say that it is a temporary ordinance. We have closed the pilot program for now. Loews and Fishes is opening up their beds to more people. So there is not a rush to pass this ordinance, or to table it. That there, that we do have time on our, I guess my point is we do have time on our side. And part of that could be gauging, gauging the data on where we are come this fall, with where we are with our efforts in addressing homelessness. Cory?
Yeah, ba, based on your charter, and the fact this was adopted on first reading, and I just went into the charter, you would have to have second reading within sixty days of April twenty-third, twenty-twenty. Or twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two, I'm sorry. So it would have to be probably your last meeting in June, would have to be tabled to June twentieth, in order for this ordinance to be considered on second reason, reading and still be valid.
Okay.
And, and the alternative is, the, if, if we wanted to continue the process, we would just have to start over and do another first reading.
And, and you'd have to go back through the planning commission again, because this also had the hearing process in front of the planning commission. So you would start over.
Okay. Councilmember Dennehy.
I just kind of want to follow up on this, because I, I actually agree with Councilmember Schmisher. And I think the one thing that we can look at too, is meeting with the county. And, you know, we all say, what's everybody in the county doing? What's, you know, what are commissioners not doing? But I think it's important that we get, this, this is an area. I just think it's important that we all get on the same page. And, and that's what I'm saying, is get, get everybody on the same page. And I say, and I agree, that we should table it for a while.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm going to echo the comments from Councilman Dennehy and Councilmember Schmisher as well. Second readings are second readings for a reason. A lot of people came up here and said, this is the first time they've heard of it today. That's why we have two readings, so that you can come and express yourself. I've learned that as a councilperson. And I think it's very valuable that you guys all did find out and were able to come tonight. And with those comments, like I said, I, I echo tabling.
Mayor Protim Hamrick.
I have a motion.
Yes?
Madam Mayor and Council, I move that we table a bill for ordinance nine, series of two thousand twenty-two, until our council meeting on June twentieth.
I second.
Is there any discussion from Council?
Madam Mayor? I just have one thing to say. I too really appreciate everybody who came and voiced.
Give the microphone.
Everyone who came and voiced their opinions tonight. I really appreciate your, the time that you took, and the energy that you brought to this meeting. But what I would like to, to know, and, and to let you know, is that if, once we move through the process of bringing more people into discussions of how to deal with the challenges we face, we need to have solutions. And I, we, we've defined the problem tonight. We've heard the pain, and, and I know the pain it is. And Will, I've looked at some of that stuff with you. I've, I've seen it. I know what you're, I know what you're talking about. And in the ditch, it's, it's frightening. But if we all get together again, this is for everyone who's spent this time, let's, let's think about solutions. Let's look on, you know, talk to friends of yours in other towns. What have they done? Okay? What, what are some ideas? Let's, let's throw ideas onto the table. Let's not just come back and talk about the problem. We've already, we've, we've defined the problem. Let's come back and talk about solutions. Thank you.
There's been mention of working with county. The county has made a commitment. We have met several times with the county for joint solutions, that we can all be on the same page, and, and an understanding and strategies. They have agreed for another joint meeting. I'm gonna, probably in my, in speaking with the commissioners, I know they were going to reach out to Ryan. He's out of town for a while. So Tammy, I'm going to include you in that email for scheduling. I'll probably be in a couple of ways. One, seeing if we can get on the county schedule on their side, because they need to hear from you too. A lot of you are county residents. The commissioners need to hear from you too. And so have an opportunity to meet with the county, but also we need to schedule some workshops before June twentieth that the public are invited to, and that it will be mediated by a neutral party.
Um, Councilmember Schmisher, I see your hand is up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's, that's exactly what I was going to request as well, that we schedule at least a, a couple of workshops prior to June twentieth. And if they won't be open to the public, and therefore if, if multiple, more than two council members wouldn't be permitted to attend, I would love to, to volunteer to serve as one of the two, if there will be any closed, or invite-only meetings. Thank you.
Cory, how would you recommend those workshops?
That, that ain't legal advice. I mean. I mean, that, that is, I, I mean, I think...
I'm speaking more maybe for councilmembers like this.
I, I wouldn't limit the number of councilmembers. I would post them, so you can all, absolutely.
All can participate.
Absolutely.
All right. Any more discussion from council? I'll call a vote. Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Stein.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracy.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Hamrick.
Aye.
So the motion has been approved unanimously to table this to June twentieth with admonition to have some meetings with the county commissioners and workshops that are open to the entire Lisa, please come to the microphone.
Just a quick comment. You have the phone numbers, you know how to contact the people that have spoken tonight.
Absolutely.
If you reach out to them and make sure they're aware of the workshop, and they will be involved, and I have solutions, I just couldn't deliver them all in three minutes. So I think that...
We, absolutely, one hundred percent. We'll make sure everyone's contacted, and...
That's the benefit of these work sessions, is you don't have, you're not limited to three minutes.
Yeah. There's more, more conversation, more, a little bit more of a town hall setting. With that, I do want to give a moment to let you all give the applause that you want, if you so desire, that now is, would be the appropriate time. Timmy, if you want to come to the microphone for the benefit of the public. Come to the microphone, please. Okay.
Oh, cool.
Yes. Yeah, she'll, she'll coordinate with you. Perfect.
Ryan's compensation.
We do need to continue city council meeting. Oh, thank you staff as well for being here as well.
Thanks, guys.
Invite you to our workshops. We will carry on.
We can go quick, I think.
We still have business to take care of, council.
Yep.
Just make sure I'm on the right page of my agenda. We'll see, my, my number's not... Thank you. This is a second reading and adoption by title only of Ordinance Ten, Series of Two Thousand Twenty-Two, entitled "An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City Setting the Compensation of the City Administrator." Tammy?
Before you, you have second reading for Ordinance Ten, Series Two Thousand Twenty-Two. There has not been any changes to the ordinance since it was approved on first reading.
Is there any discussion by council?
Please take your conversations outside. Timmy?
If we could invite everyone outside, please, so we can continue our business.
Please take your conversations outside. That's you, Timmy.
All right. So this is the item ten C. This is ordinance for the, on second reading, for the compensation of the city administrator. We had discussion on this. At first reading, is there any further discussion? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion. Councilmember Smith.
Madam Mayor and council, I move to approve Ordinance Ten, Series of Two Thousand Twenty-Two, on second reading.
I second.
There's been a motion and a second, any discussion? Vote, please. Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Stein.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracy.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Hamrick.
Aye.
Thank you, council. Now, item D, introduction and first reading by title only of Ordinance Eleven, Series of Two Thousand Twenty-Two, entitled "An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City Amending Section 9.11.010 of the Canyon City Municipal Code Concerning Harassment." I'm going to turn that over to you, Cory.
Good evening again, Madam Mayor and members of council. This ordinance is necessitated by a Colorado Supreme Court decision that was recently announced in May, in March, that invalidated the state law counterpart to this ordinance. So this ordinance takes out the offending language and would then be consistent with Colorado law as revised by the Colorado Supreme Court decision.
Any questions from council? For Cory, or council? Like to entertain a motion? Councilmember Dennehy.
Madam Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve Ordinance Eleven, Series of Two Thousand Twenty-Two, on first reading.
Second.
So there's been a motion and a second, any discussion? Call a vote. Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Stein.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracy.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Hamrick.
Aye.
Before I adjourn, just want to say again, thank you to the staff, but also thank you to council. This is a long meeting, part and part of the process, and I think that you, each and everyone, you conducted yourself very well. Thank you very much. This meeting's adjourned.